For eighteen town council meeting. The county shows will now time for order. All please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
And religion is to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republican for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to use our moment of silence tonight to just let you all know that on Thursday I presented our fireworks bill to the local legislation. And the local delegates and we passed unanimously, so it's going to Tallahassee, guys. So congratulations to us for a win. All right, if we could have a roll call, please, Val.
Councilmember Coleman is not currently present. Councilmember L. Ramey.
Here.
Councilmember McLendon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Herzog.
Here.
Mayor Kane.
President.
Town manager Romalia.
Here.
Town attorney Kurtz.
Here.
Community standards director Gardner Young.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, agenda passes three, two, one. All right, we have a presentation for health insurance renewal by the Garrett Group.
So I do want to point out, we only have thirty minutes.
Yeah, if you could keep this very brief, that would be great. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, good.
Hello. Hi, my name is Melissa Morley. I'm from the Garrett Group for Strategies, your insurance broker, have been for the past few years, so happy to be back here this year. Very quick this year for me to get up here and do our presentation. So what we have in your packets is, of course, our recommendation as we do every year, and then also our renewal evaluation information. So I'll start with our recommendation for the January first, twenty twenty.
Excuse me for one moment. For the record, please, Mr. Coleman has joined the meeting.
Can I go?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just start with our recommendation. Your renewal is on January first, twenty twenty six. So you have many different lines of coverage. Our renewal, of course, is to renew with every single carrier that is currently in place. One change on the medical, so we'll talk a little bit about that. So currently, your medical is with Florida Blue. You're in the small group under fifty market. You have one plan that all the employees are on, along with a health reimbursement account. This is the year that last year we started the HRA. This year will be the second year, and the amount of money that they get in their HRA is dependent upon their wellness activities, so we tied it to their wellness, so that was great. And we're gonna recommend that you still continue on with the Blue Care Plan. But move to a composite rate as opposed to the age-banded rates. So currently, right now, you are age-banded, so every single person has a cost related to their age, including the children. So moving to the composite rate, every person who was enrolled as an employee only gets one rate. And that actually is saving you about seven thousand dollars to move to the composite rate from the age-banded rate for one one twenty six. Every year, we analyze the age-banded versus the composite. And this is the year that the composite finally comes out to be a little bit cheaper. Usually, it's not, so it's finally because you're over twenty employees, so that's the key with your group. So we'll continue on with the Florida Blue and move it to the composite rating. And you'll see in the background here on the renewal evaluation, you can actually see the numbers, and we can go through that, or that can be something you review on your own. And then, of course, we have a flexible spending account. The employees put their own money into this, so we recommend continuing moving on with the flexible spending. Dental and vision are voluntary coverages. The employees spend their own money on these. Dental got a slight increase and vision got a slight decrease. So they'll probably come out to be whole again. Basic life insurance, the town pays for this coverage at a hundred percent, of course, and this got a no increase because it's under rate guarantee for another year. Your STD that the town pays for is under rate guarantee for another year. And the LTD that the town pays for is under rate guarantee for another year. So all of those are staying as is, so no increase. We'll see next year what the Hartford comes back with for renewal for January first, twenty twenty seven. And then, if more details are needed, you can look at the renewal evaluation, where we just put in there, of course, your renewal numbers on the first page. And then the renewal with the composite ratings, you can see all the differences of what each employee would pay more or less. And the town's costs versus the age-banded rates. And you'll see that the increase is seven point two percent under composite versus eleven percent under age-banded. So that's your savings of seven thousand between those two percentages for the increase. And then we just put a couple more options in there. If you wanted to look at the options of moving your plan to a different plan design, you always have the option to do that. So we wanted to make sure that that was in there, but of course, you're within your budget, always at the under ten percent, which is, you know, where you'd want to be.
Everybody, anybody have any questions? You'd want to reserve them for the next meeting?
Oh, Valerie's dead. Okay, go ahead. I see you clicking. So was any other insurance? I know Valerie, this is your bailiwick.
She just said there's comparisons on the left page.
For Blue Cross and Blue Shield, right? There's different Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
Yes, United Healthcare is the only other insurance carrier that's an option for your group in the under fifty market, and they are about thirty percent over your current.
Municipal insurance group, did we look at any of the state employee groups, like government employee groups? This is all private?
Yes, this is, there's two insurance carriers in the under fifty market.
Okay.
Florida Blue and United Healthcare.
But there's also municipal insurance.
Are you speaking of FMIT?
FMI, yeah, acronyms. So there's a couple of them. There's, I think, two.
No, there's only one, FMIT.
FMIT.
That is it. I did not get a rate from them because they're with United Healthcare, and last year they were not competitive, but certainly could get a rate.
Thank you for answering that. That was my question, would they be competitive or not? Thank you.
We can find out.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, do we want to vote on this now, or do we want to move this to the December second meeting, so we have time to review the numbers, to review?
Yeah, it was intended as a presentation, and it'll be presented, it'll be on for voting on December second.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and all the work on this. By the way, we've priced with United Healthcare and the League of Cities in the past. And we thought that they would be less expensive, but they are not. We also looked at trying to give people, including this year, individual dollar amounts. Like if the cost of the average employee is one thousand dollars, if we gave each employee one thousand dollars so they could go buy their insurance, could we save money? And the answer to that is no, because in order to do that, you have to go ahead and do something called I-Choice Plan. And I-Choice Plan is thirty percent more. So while the answer to your question, Councilperson L. Ramey, was no, we didn't look at the League of Cities. We didn't look at it because we know we don't fit the insurance that they provide. What we did do instead was look at if we could give people money to go to the marketplace and see if we could save money, and that too was also more. So when we say there's only two companies that serve this market, those are the two that we go to. Because we've looked everywhere else to see if anybody else can serve the market. Did I explain that correctly?
I'm sorry, did you want me to say that?
Yes, I think that was the answer that everyone needed to hear.
Okay, thank you.
And for those.
Great night, thank you.
And for those at home and in the audience, the town's STD is short-term disability.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. Sure appreciate it. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Item number two is taken off. We don't have the contracts for you. We will put them on December second.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which consists of item three?
Question, did we have the backup material at the time this came out? For item two?
The backup material for item number three came out on Friday. It was sent out on Friday or posted to the agenda on Friday.
Come on for Keshavah.
But three's been removed. What about two has been removed?
Two has been removed.
Two is removed. But, okay, so three, okay, my bad. So that's been removed, and three didn't have the backup when the agenda came out.
Right, I guess it got sent to us on Friday.
Yeah, there were ongoing discussions with Keshavah on that item. As I indicated in the memo, the issue arose on Monday. And Keshavah had to examine their records and then provide us with some information. That went out on Friday. There was a supplement to the agenda that was posted. And if the primary driver is that the state on the DEP grant, or I'm sorry, the resiliency grant, wanted us to give them information as to when the contract would be updated by November twentieth. So we were hoping to actually give them the updated contract. If you want to defer this matter till the December meeting, we can advise the folks at the state that they can anticipate the revised contract in early December. So we're trying to expedite the matter.
The purpose of the contract amendment is to expedite a reimbursement of state monies.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Why do we bother?
I started it. Okay, motion to approve consent agenda, only one left is number three.
Do I have a second?
All seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed, passes four to one. Okay, on to the regular agenda. Item number four, Valerie.
Consideration of approval on ordinance number twenty twenty five zero nine on second reading. An ordinance of the town council of the town of Loxahatchie Groves, Florida, reorganizing and amending Chapter fourteen Code Enforcement by adding Article one in general and Article two lien reductions and releases. Amending Section fourteen dash four, application for relief from code enforcement lien to provide general provisions applicable to lien reductions and releases. To adopt Section fourteen dash five, special magistrate lien reductions and releases. To address reductions by special magistrate. To adopt Section fourteen dash six, other lien releases. To address partial releases on liens and releases of unforeseeable liens. And for other purposes, providing for conflict severability codification and an effective date.
And this is second reading, and a public hearing has been scheduled at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero nine.
Do I have a second?
Second. You want to open it up for public hearing?
We, okay, I am now opening it up for public hearing. Lisa, you have a question?
If you, on the, I believe the language is that the town manager, Jeff, guide me on this, the town manager is the one that makes determinations?
As to whether or not there is a life safe, healthy.
Correct. Is that always the town manager? Because we might be talking about the building inspector, the health department. Is that the right language limiting it to the manager?
I think it's the manager or their designee. And the reason that it is the manager is because within your framework of the charter and the ordinances, the only specific person or department that is identified is the town manager. So that's the one employee that you're always going to have, and that's why generally, when there is an administrative function, we appoint the town manager or their designee. With respect to this issue, remember, this is not during the code enforcement process itself that the designation takes place. This is after there has been a lien and someone comes in for a reduction of the lien. The manager takes a look at the underlying case and makes a determination as to whether that violation that resulted in the lien had to do with a life safety or health matter that impacted a person or could have impacted a person.
So by state statute, though, are we circumventing like the health department, right? Because?
No, remember.
Because obviously, this is not as timely as in a code, like an acute code situation. This is, obviously, time has passed.
This is after the fact that there has been, the violation has been determined. There's a lien that has been running outstanding, and somebody, yes, and somebody is coming in and requesting a lien reduction. There is nothing in state statute that requires the town to grant a reduction. And so what we've set up here is this duality of systems in that most things are going to be able to go to the special magistrate. One of the exclusions is if it is determined that the underlying violation affected or could have affected life, health, and safety of a person. In that case, the special magistrate can't hear it, and it goes to the town council as a first or you folks can deal with it. And your decision has to be unanimous, and there has to be at least four of you voting on the subject to grant any relief.
So my other question then leads to that five thousand dollar appeal process. Is that by state not considered punitive? I was looking through some case law and some opinions and really couldn't find anything specific other than the word punitive.
Once again, once again, this process is something that is not mandated or directed by state statute. This is the process that the town is coming up with to consider these matters. The five thousand dollars was arrived at to be consistent, if you will, with the direction that the council gave with respect to special magistrates. Not being able to reduce fines or grant partial release, I'm sorry, reduce liens or give partial releases of liens for a less than a five thousand dollar collection amount. So that limitation on the five thousand dollars as to what the council might consider. You, being the body that represents the town that owns the lien, you can reduce that lien to a zero amount if you think that that's appropriate. But the town would still be collecting the five thousand dollars to petition you all for that. Because, as I said, it's consistent with what the special magistrate can do. And it also involves a situation in which we're going to have to take up your time at a meeting, and you're going to have to listen to a presentation and all those kind of things and consider the matter, and staff time. So.
Did you have any more questions?
Yeah, I don't think it falls into the lines of punitive, because this is, in the instance where somebody's paying five thousand dollars to get this application done, they have tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of, you know, yeah. So that's, so, yeah, I don't think it's punitive to charge five thousand dollars, just like it's, you know, two thousand dollars to get an application for a variance on the ULDC. You know, it's kind of like, we don't want to be processing application after application after application, so it's kind of.
Yeah, and presumably, presumably, if the folks could pay it off for less than five thousand dollars, they would do that.
And I found a typo.
Tell me.
The determination is made by the T. Wan manager or designee.
On.
Page fourteen.
Page fourteen.
T. Wan, Twan, Twan, yeah, T. W. N. Exactly.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
Oh, in the, that's in the memorandum? It's not in the ordinance, yes. Got it, yeah. No, I just.
Valerie, we got ten minutes to get through these three items. Do you have any public comment? No?
Nope.
Okay, can we have a vote then, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Four, passes four to one. Okay, number five.
Consideration of approval on ordinance number twenty twenty five nineteen on first reading. An ordinance of the town council of the town of Loxahatchie Groves, Florida, calling for a referendum of the qualified electors of the town of Loxahatchie Groves to be held on March tenth, twenty twenty six. As to whether the town of Loxahatchie Groves Charter shall be amended in the following respect. amend paragraph two, appointment removal, compensation, filling of vacancies of section four administrative of the charter to provide for charter officers to be removed from office by a majority rather than a supermajority vote of the full council and providing for severability, the repeal of laws in conflict, codification, and an effective date.
Any comments from anybody?
I think you have to open the public.
Do I have to open this as a public hearing?
It's not a public hearing item, but you may take comment.
Okay, if nobody else has anything to say, I just have one thing to say. I had a, I was thinking back on some, I understand that it was the recommendation of the charter committee to move it to three to a simple majority so that they match. But I remember a conversation that we had up here, and we had talked about requiring a supermajority for both. So I was wondering, this is something that has to go out as a referendum, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I was wondering if it would be possible to put it out in the referendum as that both either require a simple majority or a supermajority and let the voters decide that. Because I do agree that they should be consistent. Firing and hiring should be consistent, right? And we're changing the one to make it consistent with the other, but in my opinion, we're going the wrong way. I think it should take a supermajority to take either of these actions, because they're pretty significant actions to take. So I was wondering if the referendum, are you catching my drift, can be worded, you know, checkbox A if you think it should just take a simple majority to do both, or checkbox B if you think it should take a supermajority to do both, okay?
No, you cannot, I don't think you can give that kind of a choice. You can propose an alternative.
It's a supermajority, because I think that this is a pretty significant change that you're talking about making, and it should be something that all of council or a majority, a supermajority of council agrees to doing one way or the other. So that's just my opinion. I don't know how many else feels about it. Lisa, obviously, has an opinion. Go ahead.
So we are one of the few charters in Palm Beach County that even requires a supermajority for anything. For this, for this hire-fire thing, right? We're the only, we're one of a handful that even requires a supermajority. That is a false hurdle that was established when we were a different model. And I don't recall the conversation of supermajority both ways, so I'm in support of how it's presented tonight.
Todd?
So I have mixed feelings about it. You know, I'm open to the public voting on it, because that's what the committee asked for, and we give that ability for people to do that. On the other hand, I think it's going to be more difficult if you have it where there's three. Of course, I'm going to vote against it when it's time to vote at the ballot box. And my reason for that is, we already have a revolving door with town managers already. Could you imagine if it was easier to get rid of one, we'd probably be on number ten instead of seven, right? So that's my concern, right? So we have a supermajority vote on other things, right? The ULDC and some of the stuff in the comp plan and whatnot. And we do that because, like I need to point out, these are major decisions, and it should be really thought through instead of just three people deciding. Because we've seen three people get elected to the council at the same time that could walk in and fire the town manager and the town attorney overnight. And those are major decisions that should be really thought out, long process. So, but I see both sides to it, but I'm fine with letting it go the way it is, even though I'm going to vote against it.
Paul?
I mean, I think there's checks and balances in place for that. I mean, you know, the contract is, you know, most contracts have clauses in them versus, you know, improper termination and things like that. So, I mean, I think, you know, to just walk in and say we're going to get rid of somebody without cause, you know, that, yes, it's quite simple to do. But, I mean, you know, we sat up here and figured about a contract for hours on end, still, we really kind of came to like a halfway middle ground, I think, or something, you know, so, I mean, I don't know, I've always been, I've said for years that, you know, the three to hire, four to fire thing is just doesn't.
I agree a hundred percent. It should be the same number for both.
Right.
I just am thinking that it should be the supermajority, but if, you know, the majority of you disagree with that, I'm okay with.
And I don't, I don't prescribe to the, well, you're never going to get a town manager because, you know, there's no security.
Well, it's not just that, there's multiple issues required. That's just one of them. That's all.
Well, I mean, I just, yeah, I think there are multiple issues why, but, I mean, it's, yeah, just for that simple reason, you're never going to get somebody with a town manager.
It's just adding one more to the group of ten reasons.
I supported it for years. I've been saying it for years, so.
Anybody else up here? Do we have any public comment on this stuff? Okay, Mrs. Standish?
For Dennis Standish, I'm full disclosure, I didn't serve on the charter committee that created this problem. And it came down to being consistent. Three, two to hire, to be three, two to hire, it's simple. And by the fear mongering, well, we can fear monger everything. Come on, we live in the real world. And bottom line, the town clerk can always serve as a interim town manager until someone is found. It's inappropriate. Oh, my God, we'll never find anyone. Please, we're all adults here. You take what the pool is, you deal with reality. Again, a supermajority makes it difficult to agree on anything. We've seen that at this council. It's more appropriate for planning and zoning. I don't see why it's an issue of keeping a simple majority for hiring staff or, you know, specifically town manager. Thank you.
Anybody else? No?
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty five.
Second. All in favor? Passes five to zero. Okay. Item number six.
Consideration of approval on ordinance number twenty twenty five twenty on first reading. An ordinance of the town council of the town of Loxahatchie Groves, Florida, calling for a referendum of the qualified electors of the town of Loxahatchie Groves to be held on March tenth, twenty twenty six. As to whether the town of Loxahatchie Groves Charter shall be amended in the following respect. amend paragraph four, town attorney of section four administrative of the charter to provide the attorney's required review of contracts, bonds, and other instruments shall be as further defined by ordinance or resolution and providing for severability, the repeal of laws in conflict, codification, and an effective date.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty.
Wait, any discussion? Any public comment?
Are there any public comments? No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes five to zero. Okay, we are done with the time that we allotted for this meeting, so item number seven will have to move to our December fourth meeting, December second meeting?
December second.
December second meeting.
We actually have one more minute?
But that's not enough time, so we're going to move that to December second meeting, and I can have a motion.
About the workshop during our workshop?
Of course we have. Just moving the official.
Who are we voting on?
Okay, so could I have a motion to adjourn this meeting, please? All in favor? Meeting's adjourned. Shall we take our?
Take our other seats?
Small seats, ladies and gentlemen, and start our workshop. Thank you, staff, for your time. Certainly appreciated.
Thank you.
I know.
Oh, did you get your cookies?
Yeah, right.
You're going to need your cookies.
I'm glad, because I forgot mine at home. I went.
My gosh.
I was going to Costco, I'm like, oh, I got something good to eat. Surprised it lasted that long, my dad. Surprised it lasted that long, my desk, hello.
Oh, cookies, cookies, cookies. Have a good night, thank you, your time.
Interactive, jump in there.
Well, just kidding. Everybody don't have to read the sales. Okay. Alrighty, guys. So. I'm not reading this meeting, it's work, just don't worry. We're gonna forget all the ledgers and things like that, but we've done already. I wanna make a suggestion that we put one of these up there, because these work great. That thing doesn't work very good. The new ones are-
But shoot, can't vote on it, we gotta wait till November.
It is November.
December, December.
December, December, you know, you know whatever I was going.
Okay.
What you're stepping in.
Give him a little sarcastic jab in it.
Alright, um, so there were a couple of things that we had said that we wanted to talk about tonight, continued from the last meeting. Um, I know one was the the actual consulting. I'm just gonna kinda make a mini agenda here, the actual consulting report. Oh, help me out, guys, what else was there? There was the actual consulting-
The uh, we were supposed to get the list of priorities from staff, but I think we can make up our own.
No, I think we should have the list from-
We have the list.
It's like a hundred and sixty-five items.
Right.
Yeah, I think-
We'll put that at the end.
I think we can figure out what might-
It might serve us to kinda maybe discuss what our priorities are, and then see how that lines up with-
Right.
What the list is.
Well, that's what it was, the list isn't in a priority, it was, we were asked, we were given a list that said,
Yeah.
order it for your priority.
It was a, it was a Vomitus list of thought.
It's been called, it's been called into groups, right? But I think it's, you know, we, we could probably get, you know, I mean, I think all of us think infrastructure's a problem, and things like that, I think, you know.
And then, uh, we have a request from the public to talk about FDAs being amended for ag and about tree mitigation conflict. Okay, I think that probably will take the bulk of our time. Shall we start with the actual consulting, because that's kind of been hanging around for a while?
Yeah, unfortunately.
I'm sorry?
Unfortunately, I don't have mine.
Why not?
Because I ran out of my house after I ran home really quick, and I left it in my work truck.
Do you have an old agenda? Because it was in-
It's going.
It was in the old agenda.
Don't worry, I'll catch up.
Um, it, do you have your last week's agenda maybe out in your truck? Because it's in there. Oh, you have, oh, right, okay, or, or on your iPad. It was just right in front of you, instead of there. Okay. Alright, anybody wanna jump in there?
Well, I think it's, it's not anything that wasn't known to, to most people. I think maybe the degree to some of it, um, is probably the more clarifying aspect of this. So, uh, I think that the, the really important part was demonstrated tonight. Council doesn't keep, they don't keep their word, right? We said if stuff is not available, if it's not provided on the agenda, it's not covered. We approved two items, or three items for discussion tonight and, and for the meeting. And we get a, we get an agenda that has seven items and a, one of them's a presentation. So I think it, it still behooves council to actually effectively serve as the executive board and, and keep the parameters clearly defined. And I think that was one of the overarching themes here is, things are not clearly defined. And I think that starts with us, because we can only control us, right?
Hundred percent.
So I think that, that's something that we should be focusing on. And we keep saying that's our policy, and then we keep breaking the policy.
Well, I mean, here's my thought process. The reason why government takes so long is because of all these, you know, so if the, if Techevar, let's say, didn't get the, the, the contract to us in time for the town attorney to, you know, look at it and review it, to get it on the agenda, do we just push it off? And there's some things that are not pressing that we can press, push off. But the thing that we just voted on was something that was pressing. That's why I went ahead and voted for it, even though it wasn't on the agenda.
It wasn't pressing, other than the state wanted it by the twentieth, and it could have come later.
It could have, but I, I didn't know what kinda hiccup that was gonna cause, if it slows it down a month and us getting funding for something.
But you have children.
I, I, no, I hear you, I know.
This, this is a behavior problem.
But everything's not black and white, sometimes there's a gray area, right?
But you gotta, if you don't set a, a structure, then there's no structure.
Right, but if you tell your kids it's nine PM curfew every night, and something happens and they're, you know-
But this happens every meeting, Todd, this is not a once-off, blue moon kind of event.
Conversations with them at length about it, I can assure you.
But until council says-
But then we're cutting ourselves, is the problem.
Are we?
We are. There are some things that if we didn't do it and we pushed it off a month, then there's things that aren't progressing that we want to progress.
Okay, well, that goes back to our priority list. Because I'm not sure what comes forward on these seven-item agendas when we approved three things was what we would have prioritized.
Well, if we had got on, if we hadn't get to some of those items, then they would have been pushed off, like the, you know, the one, the one item, number seven, was pushed off, we got it done at by six o'clock. You know? That was the point, right? They had a half hour.
I mean, I, I did try, I did try to stick to the, you know, we said you could have a half hour, and that's it, and we didn't get through the whole agenda that was presented, so that was that. I was definitely not thrilled about the health insurance presentation taking the first ten minutes of our thirty minutes.
Of another presentation to be put on the agenda.
Didn't happen.
Yes.
I think that, I think that when a polling was done, and I think that enough council members said exactly what you're saying, no, you're not adding another, you know, we have thirty minutes, you're not adding another presentation, it's not, it's not our emergency, it's not a town emergency, but I, I do concur with Todd that anything that will get us our funding back, I mean, there, there are, there, there has to be a gray area, but I agree with you that, that, that this report clearly says that leadership has issues with communication and with working in harmony, and we are the leadership. The five of us, and whatever five people are sitting in this seat are, are, are that, so this is, this is what that.
I don't, I don't read this as saying it's solely this leadership that has the problem.
I agree.
There, there's, there's leadership on down as well.
Correct, but it, but we're the top.
But I, I understand what you're saying, we're the top, and, and, and it's been put in a contract and told that we need to give a clear, you know, um-
Guidance.
Guidance, you know, path for priority.
How many times has council done that? Multiple times.
They sat-
Not talking about this council.
Yeah, they sat weeks or months or whatever, working on a whiteboard and got this hundred and sixty-five item list that really, when you-
It's there and-
Get ten, work ten, have an act.
Five, yeah.
The list, this, this list is, you know, it's, it's grouped in the stuff, and, but the thing is, is there's no, you can't even tell what's done, because the done stuff's just taken off the list.
Well, and here's one of the problems.
And there's no, and there's no, there's no action item section, there's no-
Eight percent something, right?
Yeah.
We don't add-
Yeah, all this stuff, yeah, there's stuff could have been, like, this could have been a hundred and sixty-five, sixty, this could have been a hundred in my hand, sixty-five could have got done. We can't, we don't know what's done, we don't know what's pending, we don't know what has the highest priority, and wasn't like an action item that we need to discuss how, how we're gonna move it in. And I think that's where we're going forward, but, you know, I think there's a clear, you know, there's, you know, double assigning things, I think the, the mention of the use of the software that we already own, right?
Asana.
Yeah, thank you. It is, it, you know, we have tools in place.
That aren't being used.
Yeah, I think there's some, some movement to start using those tools, but I think that definitely we, that needs to be a direction from us, that this is, this is a, a, you know, a, a zero, or, what's the word?
But I, I, I would, um, I would disagree, to me, that's a management. That's, we should not be dipping our toe, to me, that is micromanaging, right?
Right.
We may say, improve efficiency, and if Asana is the way that they, they go about improving that efficiency, great.
Well, I think we say, we have, we have purchased this, or you came and we, as the council, or previous, whatever, has approved the purchase of this tool, and you're not utilizing this tool. So one of our directions is, you need to start utilizing the tool more to become, you know, because-
Well, do we say that, or we say, we've provided tools for efficiency, we expect them to be utilized?
More effectively. So we have to be careful not to micromanage, not to step outside of our lane, because one of the problems and one of the discussions that I've been having for the last year with staff is that there's not, um, there's not sufficient efficiency and communication. And one of the biggest problems that I saw when I first came on council was that, um, nobody was staying in their lane. Okay, everybody was, you know, had one foot in their lane and one foot in the next person's lane, and it, and it was, and it was a problem, right? Because you're not getting your job completely done, and you're worrying about whether that person is, and so I've been really trying to, you know, and that had, Francine did like a rea, but, but I didn't tell Francine how to do it, but I said, you need to find a way to have everybody stay in their lane, and she did, she did a reorganization, she did the departments and the heads and all that stuff, and, and made that clear, so. But now it's gotta be more implemented, okay, more practiced, I guess, is what-
Well, I guess, to my point, to my point.
Very effective with the water control. Uh, I mean, they're little groups that have their tasks that they do repeatedly. I mean, they come to work, they know what they've gotta do.
Right, they've got a schedule.
Yeah.
In, in my mind, micromanagement is telling her, okay, this person is to do this task, this person is to do that task, this person, not going, the town purchased this tool, the tool is called X, Y, and Z, I don't care. If you say, well, you have the tools, use them, it's the same as saying, you have this tool called Asana, you need to use it, it's the same thing.
So would a compromise be, we would like to see the, uh-
I'm not, I'm not-
Well, no, I'm-
I'm not looking for a compromise.
But how does, I'm just, you measure this, and I know where you're going, right? How do, how do we, how, how, well, how do we encapsulate that and, and direct the manager? And then, how do we set a measurable outcome to that, right? Is it getting, is it forty percent utilized now? Can we get it up to sixty percent utilization, right? Is it-
Well, I don't think we should limit it just to the Asana. I think that, I, I think that we have to incorporate all of the suggestions we've made, like staying in your lane, like, you know, like, and, and then, yes, find a way to measure it, I, I agree. Um, but I'm looking for a more broad direction that we can give to staff that is, um, not as, um, micromanag-y, you know, that is more like, um, something, and I'm just throwing stuff out there, guys, don't, don't crucify me. Um, something, yeah, I'm just throwing stuff out there. Something along the lines of, we would like to see the tools and suggestions for communication and management.
Project management.
Project management that are already in place, utilized to a higher potential. Yeah, to, to a higher potential. And I'll give you some other suggestions that I have made that haven't been implemented. Like, one of the things I said is, we need to be able to measure customer service satisfaction. So anyplace you call, right, you get, you, you, you get that, you get a little two-minute survey that comes out afterwards where you satisfied, was your problem handled, something like that. I, I asked for that like a year ago, because, you know, I think we need to know, one of the things that I hear a lot from people is that, you know, my complaint isn't being handled by, whatever, it's not being taken care of. And so this would, that would be an effective way for us to know, okay, we've got, and then we would have percentages, which is something that you're looking for, which is what I was looking for too, you know? And, and then- Like a customer service satisfaction.
And, and could it be something, because obviously we don't wanna burden staff, and so much of that can be electronic and-
Yeah, it's automatic.
Free, right, through Survey Monkey and things like that, but-
Automatic.
Can council then bring results back to the workshops, and then we can review it?
Yeah, that's, that's what, I mean, that's what I'm looking for, is something, something measurable, but also something to let people know, we care, was your problem, you know, like, it's not, you know, I, I don't, I don't know if anybody else gets constant calls from people, you know, like with code-
I have one today.
Play, complaints are things that, this is what's going on on our road, and this is what's going on in our neighborhood, and they're not doing anything about it. And, you know, then I'll look into it and I'll find out, well, well, they are, but it's painfully slow. So I was hoping as part of this system, there could be, you know, this is the, you know, like, an every thirty days update sent out, update text take out. This is where it's at now, this is the status of it now, because we know it takes like a year for this stuff to actually get through to the painfully slow government thing. It takes like a year, if you're lucky, for this stuff to get through there. So if, if every thirty-day status text could be sent out. I mean, I get these texts all day long from, you know, everybody, there has to be some way, and I don't know whether this Asana system is powerful enough to do that, I, I don't know.
We get a, we get a report from the director of code compliance, or whatever we're calling it today, you know, we get a report that once a month, right?
Right.
That, that's our report, we have this many open cases, we have this many closed cases, we had this many open in this time.
No, I'm talking about the individuals who are, who are concerned in making the complaints, that they get, I, I'm talking about customer service, I'm talking about serving the community and communicating with the people. That's what I'm talking about, about, and public feedback.
Perception and-
I know that we get reports, and we see the percentages, and we see the numbers and things like that, but, um, I, I, I'm thinking like something like a constant contact, you know what I mean? Those things that you get are so-
Tax and email service, your Survey Monkey, there's a couple different surveys that are free.
So, how can we put this, and so we want, um-
Customer satisfaction, follow-up survey.
Increased use.
Well, micromanaging, so we just need to tell them to figure out a way to, to track and, and be able to report on, you know, customer issues. If, you know, if I have, even if it's something simple and you, and they just report it.
Tools that are already in place. Okay, let me just write it down, and then and consider the use of survey tools to measure outcomes, how's that? Okay, this is what I'm gonna suggest.
Public wants to speak.
I, I'm gonna let them, as soon as I get this in a form that we're all happy with, I'm gonna let the public speak. Increased, increased use of project management tools that are already in place, and consider the use of survey tools to measure outcomes. Does that sound like a reasonable and not micromanag-y?
Outcome slash satisfactory.
Outcome slash satisfaction, okay. Do we have some people from the public that wanna, yes, please, go ahead, Jane. Come, can you?
It's on.
There's a microphone, oh, in your hand, she's got it already, go, Jane, she's ready.
You don't have to, you don't have to walk to the podium, Jane, that's why Todd gave you the mic.
Have a seat.
Painfully slow, what I don't understand is, with, especially with the RV thing, now there's somebody who's calling us to come out and inspect the pumping of RVs where there is no septic, you have someone contracted to come in, so what is there to inspect? All I know is that originally, when I brought in my RV paperwork, and I'm ready to do it again, because it's season, I attached who was doing it, and they signed it like Rick's Toilet and Anderson Rentals. Now, there's a guy on the weekend who is calling and saying, I need to come out and inspect your pumping. Well, if we don't have a septic system, what is there to pump? If we're calling someone to come in. So he came out, and he asked for receipts, and who was pumping. So that's painfully slow, that's like, to me, is a waste of time. I don't understand that. And then I'm on the, our website, because you know me, I like to do everything right, the same application from way, way before is still on there. There's not a new one, there's, the rules still are not exactly right, and they're still asking for, uh, it, it's, it's the same application. So I'm going to fill it out like I did the last one.
It, it's the same application from when, Jane, I'm a little confused, I'm sorry, I wanna follow what you're saying. From the, the original years ago application?
Yes, from when they first started this discussion on the-
The original pilot program?
No, it's, it's up to date to the last ordinance, but it, it's probably last, has the wrong dates and stuff on it, and that hasn't. To my knowledge, staff hasn't, hasn't changed any of the rules that were put in place.
I don't think so.
And, and in order for, for the permit to be issued, yes, they have to come and inspect it.
And they did, they came, they inspected my water, they inspected my plugs, they inspected the area. Now, they were being told they have to come out every single year to inspect.
I believe that's in the paperwork. I believe that's in the paper, if you read through all of it, because.
What is there to inspect if you have a.
You have to prove that you're not.
That you're not dumping in the ground and you're just not getting tickets.
Oh, I see, so you, they want to see your actual spot to make sure.
Make sure that that hose isn't just dangling out there in the yard.
Believe it or not, there were, there were and are people pumping fecal matter onto their neighbor's property and onto the ground in town.
Those people been stopped.
They're working on it.
It's a slow and painful process, Jane.
No, there were actually, there's actually recently been a code complaint put in on, I think, ten RV parks, illegal, illegal RV parks within the town. So, yeah, so, uh, where, it's being worked on, but.
Now, because I found it quite useless for someone actually not to take the time to go out to a property where you are contracted, like I was with the Anderson Rentals and I would work for them, and I have letters signed. So now you're saying, regardless of the, they've admitted they're coming up to make sure that.
Annually.
That you're still doing what you said you're doing, because people also unfortunately stopped doing what they said they were doing. So they just want to make sure that you have those contracts every year.
Yeah, it's not a one and done.
It's a yearly permit.
It's a yearly thing. Yeah.
But so what was the five-year thing?
That depends on if you're ag, ag classified.
I think it also depends on if you're renting it or not, I think if it's your personal.
No, I think if you're ag classified, it was for five years, if you're not ag classified, you had to do it annually.
I think if you're renting, I think if you're renting it also, you have to do it annually with your new renters that come in, but I, I could be wrong.
But.
Well, can, can you call them and ask them, code and ask them, or, I mean, or one, Lisa, will you look into it for her?
I'll review it again.
Okay.
It was very confusing paperwork, I admit. Yeah, yeah.
But definitely it was clear that you had to have everything inspected annually, because.
You know, hope that pass, obviously, but that has never happened either. And I, I mean, I don't really care what if that happens or not, but I'm just saying.
I'll get back to you, Jane.
Well, I think the seal of disapproval is you go into code enforcement, so if you don't go into that, you're good, you got the seal. But that's what I'm talking about, communication, that goes back to the, the point I was making is communication, so that's good. Yeah, Mr. Austin, you look like you might want the mic. Can you hit it to him?
It's not on.
It doesn't pick you up on the, and, and it's being recorded, so please.
Consistency, talking about our biggest defender on Hyde Park there, last time I looked on the webpage, he has stuff closed that he never took care of. So how are they closing violations that he's never taken care of? That's the cut, consistency, I mean, there's no consistency on this one, this one has been gone for years, you're talking about slow, this is going on five years now.
I know.
And it's only getting worse, he's not doing anything, he moved some RVs off and then brought a couple back, I believe.
But that's how it got closed, because he moved them off.
Right, but that's not the only complaint.
No, I get that.
There's also other complaints that he did nothing for, and he's got them closed. And now he's got it, he tricked the health department to give him a permit for a large septic taking drain field for his apartment building, calling them offices. Well, people come home there in the evening, now all three apartment buildings can shower and use the bathrooms all at the same time, because he has a huge septic taking drain field, thanks to the health department, because I don't know, there's no communication. How do you get a permit for it, he has millions of dollars, over a million dollars in fines, from what I've heard, it just, there's.
The health department is a total separate.
Yeah, we have no control over what the health department.
But he lied to them, because he didn't say it's an apartments.
We have, we have, the town has zero control over what they approve.
Report him to the health department.
Report him to the health department.
He's been reported to the health department multiple times, it's like, there's no communication, there's, like you're saying, there's no consistency. I could go on that list webpage right now, look at these three or four things, like, how'd they close that? He never took care of that, why is it closed, so?
Mr. Austin, you've touched on something that I have brought this bag multiple times, and eventually we'll talk about that. So, anybody else?
No, okay, you can just set it down on the table.
Just keep it back there.
Yeah, nobody has come to the front.
Is there anything else that came out of the actual, so we've discussed, so better management practice? I know one of the things that came out of this was, um, a discussion about potential training for, um, for count, for management and council and staff, is that something that we want to put as a priority on our priority list? Or is that a no, and how do people feel about that?
Well, that's a no for me, um.
I, I think a lot of starting to utilize some of our tools, instead of specifying the tool, start utilizing the tools and, and making sure that we're not, uh, double assigning things and things like that, which is, you know, and make sure, you know, I mean, we say stay in your lane, but we do realize that, like, everybody drives three lanes or four lanes in the building, because they wear four or five different hats, right? So, you know, but stay in your lane, absolutely, but we don't want to, I don't want to assign Anita something and then turn around tomorrow and sign it to Todd.
Each other. I'm saying state, management needs to stay in their lane.
That's not what I was saying either. Yeah, I'm just saying, I, I think, once the tools start getting implemented, utilized, and, and it's more organized, and I, I think a lot of the confusion and stuff that I'm reading in here is gonna help itself. You know, and maybe we can revisit the training later on and see how, you know, see how, how things progress in the near future and revisit it. I don't think at this date, I mean, heck, we, we need to whittle down the priority list and, and give some directions, so.
That, that would help too.
Yeah, I don't know how you give training to.
But Anita, I think you, you touched on too about, um, some of the restructuring of, of department heads and stuff. And I think that also will address, like, some of the succession, um, and, and opportunity issues that, uh, obviously a small organization is going to have trouble with that, no matter what your actual widget is that you're doing, right? So, uh, I'd like to see how that goes and.
I'm sorry, I want to follow what you're saying, so you're saying that as part of staying in their, relate, yeah, and as part of that management, you're suggesting that there be added to each, like, department head, some kind of a succession chain?
Well, I think that's where people will see opportunity, right? So if you've got an assistant town clerk, right? So, um, and maybe you have two of those, I, I don't, I don't know the structure. I purposely try not to go into town hall, because that's not my job, my job is here, right? And agreeing with you guys. So, to me, if, if I was working in a small organization, it would be my department head, that would be my direct supervisor that I'm going to be looking for, for training and guidance.
Hundred percent.
And I, I think that while many people can wear many hats, uh, it's, it's something that, I think that when you're too diffuse and, and diverse in what you're doing every day, it's very hard to become expert at something and be able to funnel into that, into that position and grow into that position, right? So, um, I, I think that is something that, from the outside looking in, and I think you touched on that, that that had become something after you came on board, that department heads were established and, but it still doesn't seem that, like, that's very clearly defined yet.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think it's hard to go from a all hands on deck, do that, I also think that it's hard to Paul's point. I think it's difficult when you have a hundred and sixty-three things or a hundred and sixty-five things that are handed to you as priorities. You know, everybody's like, holy crap, we got to get a hundred and sixty-five things done and just, you know, snatching at butterflies trying to get it done. So that is definitely an important piece of work we need to get to tonight, is, is trying to get, pick the top five or top ten and like, make those the priority. And then, once one of those is at seventy-five percent or eighty percent, let's knock the next one off the list. Like, if we can come up with ten and decide that the top five are going to be worked on balls to the wall, you know, full bore, and then, you know, the next one funnels in when the next one gets, uh, to top priority. Todd, you look like you have something you want to just pick.
Because I'm thinking about the hundred and sixty-five things, if we're overwhelmed on just categorizing and ordering where they should be, could you imagine have to be the person that's implementing?
No, absolutely.
But, I mean, if, if we, if we're gonna have a hard time figuring out of the hundred and sixty-five, they're dealing with a hundred and sixty-five.
And in reality, reality, I, I was just perusing it really fast, I really didn't, like, read every line. There's stuff in there that overlaps, because it would fall in this category and this category. There's stuff in there that we, well, yeah, I, I'm gonna say we, I, I might have been Phyllis, but that we discussed, and we actually voted no against, and things like you were talking about, you know, transfer facilities, they're still on this, so, you know, it's, it's.
Yeah, while the transfer facility is still on there, and we voted no to the transfer facility, it remains a fact that we have a, we have a poop problem in our town.
Absolutely.
That we have to figure out something to do about.
So I guess that's, that's, you know, this, this is, this is a key, we, we taught, we all, we all talked about since March, talk about moving forward and, and how we're going to move forward, and this is key. But to Lisa's point, succession plans, you know, planning for, you know.
We're just talking about the.
I know, it's organizational, succession planning is, is, is a thing, you know, you don't have somebody.
Well, too.
Right, when.
Absolutely.
Growth possibility, whether that's income growth or opportunity growth. Um, and, and I think that because stuff has been so gray, and, you know, some of us go further back, and we've seen how that has not really developed or clarified. So I think that, but measurable goals, and then much like, we get an agenda that we didn't approve, um, the items that came forward, what do we do when these things are not met? Do, are we going to, obviously, we should work with staff to set realistic goals, right? Um, that we want to make these changes and we want to set this threshold in ninety days or six months, and is that a reasonable expectation? I think using OnSana is a reasonable expectation that that could happen tomorrow, right? Everyone knows it's there, right? Use it, right? So, if you don't have fifty or sixty percent compliance within thirty days, that's a problem. It's, it's there, it's.
Well, it's a tool.
It's like you telling us to use our, our calendars.
I guarantee you that tool, I guarantee you that tool has laser support.
And did we all comply? So what's the consequence? What are we gonna do, Lisa, with you?
We're gonna grab, grab Dana's calendar and throw it in the dumpster.
I can't see who's sick, collecting, yes. Are you to got an earphone? You're, so you're lucky that it's hidden from.
Paul had brought up, you know, that many of these things may be partially or fully accomplished, you know, whoever.
I don't think if they're on the list that they're partially or fully accomplished, but partially.
So there's no need for whoever wrote up the different sections to go back and let us know.
I think we need to make priorities.
Yeah, they're completely been dropped off.
Do I think it's real that we have a hundred and sixty-five issues that need to be addressed in this town right now? A hundred percent, there's probably more, I just think of more. One of the things, I, I, I want to go to this list, I want to, but I want to, I want to try to put this to bed. Are we all happy with our discussion of the consulting thing? Is there anything else anybody wants to say about that?
We talked about training, and Lisa said you, you were against training, is that for staff or training for us you're against, or both?
I have concerns about the money, uh, obviously budgeting is very tight. Uh, I think that if there's opportunity, uh, to do it in a way that is more cost-effective, obviously, that's a great thing to do.
For staff or for us?
All of us.
Honestly, I think if we're gonna spend money on, I think money would be better served, if we're gonna spend money on training, and not to say this training, before we get people.
No, no, I'm with you.
Not to say this training, but just, just even training, because, you know, listen, you, you have accreditation trainings that you need, certi, certi, certificates, we talk about accessibility.
Succession.
Succession, thank you, we talk about succession, I was mixing accessibility and, yeah, two worlds. Um, we talk about succession and succession training and the opportunities, you know, to, to know that if I want to be in this position, I need to have this certification, this certification, this certification. And, and most places you go, those certifications, the training and whatever, the testing, a lot of it's paid for, right? So it's, it's just, you know, it's like a tuition reimbursement type of thing, or it's out, just outpaid for. So I think if we're gonna spend money on training, I think we're, it would better serve us to spend money on training our staff, than it would be training whomever might be sitting in a chair up here.
But I think if we go into more defined departments, right? And you, you have as, let's say you're the head of code enforcement, right? So you've got people under you that.
Unity standards.
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, how, okay, comrade. So, we're going to, uh, get these people trained and we, and we need these people to be efficient, we need them to be effective, because we all know, to Mr. Austin's point, and the poor people on Hyde Park, the I's have not been dotted and the T's have not been crossed, and the, and the process, the process has not been up to a standard that will be a legal threshold that we can clear. It isn't going, gonna be, so yes, but that's where I think the department heads are important, because they know who they want to, to, you know, bring along and, and create that quality. But again, those people have to see opportunity within that, like, I'm just a code enforcement officer forever, right?
Right.
That's not necessarily a realistic.
No, yeah, I have, I have an aspiration, I could be the senior code enforcement officer, and I could be the, yeah, I could be the community standard.
Who I put under succession planning, training for opportunity.
Training for opportunity and, and for quality.
Opportunity and quality.
And within departments, clearly defined departments.
And honestly, I think if you get, if you get somebody that, and, and I think that, you know, um, I think the league does it, I know other organizations do it, I think other municipalities, even the county has supervisory training, things like that. When, if you promote somebody into a leader, leadership position, like you promote, attrition's great from within, right? You don't want to always be grabbing people from the outside. So if you're promoting somebody from within, because they show some kind of quality or some characteristics you think would make a good leader, department head, whatever, you know, it might be beneficial to get them leadership training, because just because they show the qualities and the ability that they, you think they might make a good leader, doesn't necessarily mean they know how to be a good leader.
So I'm thoroughly confused then, because it sounded like, unless I misunderstood you, you didn't think council should have training. But what you just described about bringing somebody in and, 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 you know, bringing them up in their, in their leadership, that they should get training with that, right? You were just saying that, you know, you, you bring people up that you, that are employees.
He said staff.
And you give them, right? But that's what we have here, right? We have citizens that become elected officials, and they probably should get some training, because now they've stepped up and they should get training. So I mean, you just argued against yourself by saying.
No, I.
In that position.
I didn't say never, I didn't say never, that's not, I wasn't, I wasn't just saying no. What I'm saying is the priority, the priority should be put, you know, if we're, if we're looking at the fiscal responsibility of this as well, and where, where the best bang for our buck would be, the best bang for our buck would be within the staff, right? That, you know, you want.
We are the leaders here.
We're, we're five people sitting up here, right, once, twice a month, making decisions, right? We are not the people running this town.
But the biggest decisions, very often, right?
We're not the people running this town, we're not the, no, we're, we're running it, we're driving it. We're not the engine, we're not the engine. The guy standing behind the wheel driving it.
But we, we adopt the policies and they implement the policies.
Okay.
We are, we are at the top, we are the ones making the biggest decisions.
Why is everything an argument?
It's not an argument, oh, why are you taking it as an argument?
Because it is an argument, Todd.
It's not.
Everything I'm saying, yes, you are, you're mixing everything I'm saying. Uh, what I'm telling you is, I tried to make an analogy and you're just trying to pull it apart. So I don't know what your agenda is, but I'm telling you right now, we, we are the drivers, or we are, we are not the motor, we're not the engine, we're the people turning the key, right? The staff, the people on the yellow shirts on the side of the road, that is the engine of this town.
I get that, they do the day-to-day operation.
Okay, so you gotta fuel the engine, you gotta gas, you know, or you gotta oil the engine, you gotta maintain, you gotta change the spark plugs. That's the training, my friend, that's the benefits, that's the pay, that's my point.
I agree.
You just, no, you just disagreed with me when I tried to say it a second ago before I stopped you.
I agreed, I agree staff should get training, but my point is, I think council should also.
So what, what would you suggest for council?
Not the seventy-five hundred dollars.
No, 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 what specifically?
League of Cities things that I went to were good.
Is the EM, EOM?
They, they were good.
Yes, those.
Yeah, I went to one, Todd went to two, I'm gonna try to go to a second one, because they were good. Yeah, I mean, they're, they're really good, not just for, um, the content that you take away, but for, um, seeing and getting to appreciate the likeness of municipal issues and to talk with your, your colleagues in completely different areas of, of the state that have similar or, you know, whatever issues, I mean, those were really, those are really useful moments, I, I think, those are really useful.
And I think council members should understand the structure of government, right? It's just, just because you're running doesn't mean you understand.
I wish most of the community understood.
Not Robert's rules specifically, but, you know, there's a structure.
That first class that we took, I, I think, like, every council, as soon as somebody gets elected, they should go take that first class.
Yeah.
I really do.
Before they're sworn in.
Almost before they're sworn in.
Well, when the, when the League of Cities was sponsoring our incorporation, they, they almost told us that you had to go to those EMU one and two classes.
And they also.
And everybody on the first council went.
Yeah, they also put you in touch with some really great resources, the presenters at these classes are some really great resources throughout the state, you know, that you can call on later, so.
There's.
I mean, I think that that's enough, is to just say that whenever possible, I mean, let's get the schedule of those classes and let's get that. I, I, I too concur that this seventy-five hundred dollar a month thing is, is a no for me. So that's three of us, I've heard four of us, Marge, the no for. Marge, the no for you. So none of us, none of us are in agreement with that.
I will say though, it's a fine line between educating and indoctrinating, right? I don't need to be told how to think, right? I want to know, I want to know how it works, right? And I think that's important. So.
There's no indoctrination.
There's no indoctrination.
Yeah.
At the, perhaps not the league, but certainly within this level, there can be some, right? Cause there's swapping going on, right? There's, it's politics, right? So you've got some group trying to push this forward, another one's trying to push this forward. So there's, you know, there's stuff that way.
So council's gonna, I, I'm not sure I'm following that point, but.
Okay.
If you, and you made it.
Like transfer stations.
Council's gonna want to. I, I, I'm not playing politics with that. Did you think I was playing politics with that? I'm just saying poop is a problem in our town and we need to do something about it. I'm not lobbying for a transfer station. I voted against a transfer station.
No, I think she's talking about the fact that we voted against transfer station stuff, but the, yeah, there's still some lingering, lingering, not, not, not how are we gonna enforce it in code?
We have vegetation processing transfer stations in our community that, what is it? Dep? Dep ladies? Dep, um, gave permits in our, in our community. It's like, you can't do that here, right? So.
I know we have the emergency one, but for like
There's like nine registered in the town that.
Well, and I know I haven't entered. The nurseries use their nursery sites as those as well. Finish this. Council should take the, what are they?
EMO.
EMO classes.
Official training or something?
When possible, okay? And hopefully when first elected that first one, because that one was really good for, for first elected. Are you waiting to talk? I'm so sorry.
Article ninety-two. And it says, site must be inspected at least once every five year per inspection fee schedule. So this is what, I mean, I don't have a problem.
The site, the site, but the, what you're talking about is the waste management.
But if you're having it pumped, okay, so where does it say about, I honestly don't have a problem.
You're, you're reading, you're reading the actual adopted information that's on MuniCode. That's, that is only a portion of what's in the documentation that the town.
So it does cover that every year, site inspection.
I, I'll look at it.
Clarification. Honestly, I don't care either way, but when you were talking about waste of time.
Well, you may have a point and, and that's not what exactly wasting time that we're talking about. Um, but I think that you may have a point that there's a disconnect between the paperwork that the residents are filling out versus what we passed legally.
Yeah.
So that would be important to see if there's a, a disconnect there. Yeah.
Yeah, Cassie's.
Okay, we're gonna put this to bed because it's taken forty-five minutes of our.
Cassie's got something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cassie. Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to comment, the training thing, I don't know. I've always had an issue with, um, in the past, the amount of money we pay to feed them. Maybe we don't have to feed full lunches because apparently there's a lot of money, but being spent. That's been talked in the past on fact. So maybe look into that, training, training, maybe don't do it during lunch. Or they can break for lunch and go, there's plenty of places. We have Culvers and all kinds of other places they can buy. So just look into that, but.
You're talking about doing staff trainings, don't you?
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
Look at thousands of dollars of being spent for lunches. So that, I see it as somebody, oh, let's have a lunch. They don't need a full lunch. Maybe break for lunch, come back, save some money. Um, as far as the DEP thing, and I don't think anybody knows, DEP will approve it. But if it's not, uh, something that's approved by solid waste, it's basically just paperwork. And they're violating and they're being allowed to continue to operate. Um, they apply for things like historical legacy, don't, don't qualify and they just get ignored. Meanwhile, they've been complained on and complained on. So I don't know if you all knew, even though they have a DEP certification, if it's not considered consistent with solid waste, it's invalid. So maybe we need to look at the map of DEP and see what's actually operating in our town. And send them a notice and say, you're in violation. So just a little.
Okay, great. Thanks.
I think the, I think the purpose behind lunch and learns is because during somebody's lunch break, they're learning and they're kind of being compensated for learning because technically you can't make them work on lunch. But I know there's lunch and learns all over the place all the time. And there's train, all day trainings that, yeah, they break for lunch. Some places provide lunch, some places don't. You know, I've been to multiple different kinds of trainings and they're handled multiple different kinds of ways. Um, you know, and, and I can tell you, there was a push before. Cause I've had this training conversation with, with Francine before. There was a push years ago, but when she first took over. Because we didn't have a CDL licensed driver, but we had a dump truck, right? So yes, they trained up a couple of people to get their CDL license and we compen- we, we took care of that as a town. Now the, the, the job description requires a CDL. So there is some give and take, you know? Yes, we needed a CDL driver, so we got CDL drivers. But now whoever's hired in that position or in those key positions that have to have it, they have, they come with it. So we're not doing that anymore. Um, but you know, certain certifications, it helps, it helps with insurances, it helps with all kinds of stuff. So you know, we got guys running chainsaws. Have a chainsaw class? You know what I'm saying? Government doesn't fall under OSHA, but it might help us, you know, with breaks for insurance and things like, I mean, there's just different things. So that's.
Doesn't fall under OSHA?
No, OSHA, OSHA has no. OSHA, OSHA, OSHA has no, yeah, yeah. Jurisdiction over, over, you know, OSHA has no jurisdiction. I think I'm bringing a broad brush, but yeah, it's pretty much, yeah.
All right, let's put this to bed because we've used a lot of time on it. Um, I want to go to one feel-good thing and that's the parade because we have to give direction to staff about how we're gonna decorate our float. Remember we talked about the, um, Wellington parade? So it's, I, I was, I came up with some ideas, but we were all supposed to go back with some ideas, so I'll float mine first. It was past and future and present, right? So I thought we might do something with like, you know.
Years.
So I, so that took me to past and present, right? And I thought we might do something like what people in Loxahatchee Groves in the past, you know, like have somebody dressed up as a a little bit more of a roughneck, you know what I mean? And then just kind of do the progression across the way. And then we could have our little Olympic dressage, dressage star, you know, a, a, for the present. I don't know, you know, something along that and just try to come up with like, are we all agreed that we're all gonna ride on the float? Yes. Okay. So if we could come up with like five characters that represent the, through the years and, and try to dress up that way and have the float be that way, like, you know, have it be an orange grove and go into a arena. I don't know. Something along those lines.
Todd, good news. There's been bird guys here forever, right?
Could be a bird. I don't know. That's just my idea to float. Like it, don't like it. If you like it, let's develop it. If not, somebody else float one. That's my idea.
I, I think it's cool.
I, how would you do that without too much investment?
Oh, we are a no investment parade. We're not spending fifteen thousand dollars on our float to win the parade. Okay, though, so no. Well, I mean, I thought we would each come up, much like when we, I know that the past, whatever, however many trainings Todd and Marge and I go to, we pay for our own meals, just so everybody knows that. We don't reimburse for meals. We pay for our own transportation. We pay for all of that. So just, just to make that, put that on the record. Um, so I thought if we each pick, paid for our own outfit. I mean, I presume you won't have to do too much paying for it to be an equestrian. But if we each, you know, come up with our own out, figure out what our progression is and come up with our own outfits, then that would save that cost. The only cost would be decorating the float and we just have to figure out what we want it to look like. And then we can start talking about what we may have to loan to it, what other people in the community may have to loan to it to make it, um, affordable.
Yeah, and the water control district, uh, they usually help with.
No, they did the flow. They totally did it. We do it on our flatbed. Last year we just did hay bales and.
On that vein, I think you could possibly get like some, like the jump standard people.
Right.
Like maybe they could do some that's in a Christmas theme and you can have that at the back. If that's where you're thinking.
Right, right. Progression, right? Exactly. The progression of the town.
To present or.
Yeah.
Right. Cause it drives by that way, right?
Right, yeah.
So I, I had talked about, uh, one of the old timey, like home away, what is it? Home Alone? Like doing our Christmas vacation, trying to do kind of a scene from one of those older established Christmas themed movies.
Yeah.
That was my thought.
Wonderful.
I got broken since then, so I don't really remember.
Broken.
Drugs between now.
All prescribed.
Marge can, Marge can. All prescription. Thank you for sharing that. We just made that clear. Well, what, what idea we want to go with? Cause we got like five minutes, ten minutes. We gotta go with it and, and plan. So what do we want to do? Do we want to try to do a scene from a movie? Do we want to try? Yes.
You know, whatever, orange river, you got cattle here, you got vegetable farmer.
Right.
Yes, give them all to birds and panther ridge. I mean, that's unique. You have different, unique wildlife things. You got big dogs.
I don't think we can take a tiger on there.
A hand puppet.
Okay, so you like that idea of the progression of the community. Okay, all right. Okay, all right. So what's our, who's gonna be our old timer?
I'm gonna be an orange.
Are you an Aegis?
Marge like in a rocking chair in something that looks like she's in like a little, one of the earlier house knitting or something like that. Okay, all right. So we're gonna start with Marge in a rocking chair.
I was in a rocking chair a year ago, I think.
Marge in a rocking chair knitting, looking like you're something from out of, looking like you're something out of the eighteen hundreds, you know, maybe have a little anaconda hanging on your. Look like a hut or something, you know, like whatever, one of the early houses. Okay. And then what's next?
Maybe a hunter.
Well, the.
A hunter next?
One of the orange trees next? You want an orange tree with somebody picking?
At the beginning.
The only one.
Cause.
The only one.
You, you're gonna be a hunter?
Sure, I could be a hunter.
Paul then is gonna be a hunter.
One of those inflatable, you know, cowboy riding on the cow.
Giant inflatable alligator. Paul's gonna be a hunter. You, you're gonna be an orange farmer?
Sure.
Okay, then Todd's gonna be an orange farmer and we'll put a tree with him. Orange farmer. Okay, what comes next? What's in between then? Uh, shall we do, I can be like an everything farmer. I can just, I can, or no, we should do something else. What comes after that? Lisa, you're the ending with an equestrian.
Can I bring a mini horse? A roe? Can I bring a mini? Will it, will it go on the float?
Oh, Leo, he's a stallion.
Says too quiet menu. So maybe we can get a mini.
You can be a roe farmer.
If it'll stay there and everything, I don't see why not.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask around. I know a few.
Um, okay. So we need something in between orange farmer and equestrian. What's it gonna be? What happens in between orange farmer?
Plant farmer.
Equestrian.
Tree farmer.
Huh? Nurseries? So, so I'll just.
But we have the exotics. We have.
So should I do the exotics and, and, okay, I'll do exotics and nurseries somehow. I don't know how.
The mushroom farms. We've got farm to table. We've got.
Oh, farm to table. Farm to table. Anita farm to table. Yep, I get.
Farmer's market. You can have a farmer's market.
Perfect. Okay. So the progression is this. Marge knitting in her chair with her with whatever snake skins hanging from her house. And Paul's gonna be a hunter with his inflatable alligator and his whatever. And Todd's gonna somehow be an orange farmer with an orange tree behind him. Then I'm gonna be there with my little table with my farm to table stuff. And then you're gonna be in a question with potentially a mini horse depending on.
A mini, maybe some jump standards with some.
Now last year they, last year they boxed us in with hay bales, which took up a lot of the room. So we need to come up with something to box us in. And the hay bales were donated. It was straw and it was donated by, I, I think Red Barn. And I can't remember. I'm sorry if I'm getting the wrong donor, but it was donated by somebody in back, but I think we probably need panels or something because we need more room. So where will we get panels to make it safe and to potentially keep a horse and us on the float?
Yeah, I'm, as cool as a live one would be. I, I don't know. That's. Yeah, I don't know. How are you gonna do that?
Especially if they're broken.
Oh, you could have a hobby horse.
Hey, that's a thing.
Nice decor.
That's, that's a thing.
But even so, we were really tight for space last year with the hay bales. So we need to ask them to do something around the perimeter that's a little less invasive of the space to make room for all.
Some kind of wire, either a picket fence, you know, or.
Picket fence would work.
Yeah.
Picket fence would be really good. There's no addis things from those. I'll donate them. I don't care. Okay.
You can also get like the little metal wire panels that hook together.
Yeah.
Maybe tractor supply will do it if we put their name on it.
Donated by tractors.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I think we've got a plan, guys. I will communicate. I will get in touch with Craig and talk to him about the planning. If he needs to talk to you about your each individual things, or if you have ideas for how you're gonna help with your each individual things, please let him know.
Anybody have a snake?
A giant snake for her.
A stuffed snake, air snake.
Well, see what you can find on T-mu.
One in the hay bale the other day, but it was really.
We covered the parade. Um, let's, let's try to cover one of Virginia's things that she brought up.
I thought we were gonna get over on the priority list.
Give you my topics and then you pick one.
I, I have your topics right here.
Everybody here has been preforming, so, uh, one, I want to make sure, uh, I want to compliment Public Works for what they've been doing with the, uh, I've noticed they've been going out in teams to do the, the lock, the, uh, cul-panals and everything. It seems actually safer, more consistent. They get done quicker and it, it looks very nice. I also want to make sure that you are aware of the Florida statute three nine seven point four eight seven. That needs to be, the ordinance needs to be updated by January first. You may already have it. Um, I'm not sure if you're aware that it's required to be done by January first. You may have something on the books. You want to check in on ordinance, uh, Florida State Statute three nine seven point four eight seven. Make sure the town has what it needs done by January first, as per the Florida State Legislature. Um, again, uh, Cassie did a lot of work last year on the FDA and ag is different than what this town is using. So I just ask you to remain vigilant. But this, uh, I think a very important topic to our community. And the guidelines are different than what we're currently incorporating. There was a lot of pushback from some of the so-called professionals. And quite frankly, I felt they were lazy and they were more, uh, geared towards zero lot line than wanting to deal with our, our community. That was and in that PowerPoint presentation they, they sent to you and presented, there was a lot of inaccuracies. Um, finally, my bottom issue and that I brought up before was that I feel that, that some of the tree mitigation policy in this town is a conflict. And the example I gave you, if somebody has a site they were developing, they decided I'm no longer gonna do this. I'm gonna sell it. And then they sell to someone who either wants to put trees in, who is going to be putting trees in. Um, and whether they're bona fide or not, or you sell to somebody who is bona fide. This town is asking a hundred and twenty-nine thousand from, as an example, from a, a property when somebody else could come in and clear up that's buying the property. So that's a clear conflict. The argument that was made that developers, of all developers do that. My point and my comment to you was the developers that developed their plant cannot go back to be bona fide. So it's a serious issue and I think it's gonna result in litigation for this town because there's a lot of inconsistencies in what this town does from code to tree mitigation. And I'm gonna, that's it.
Okay. I'm not sure if any of those things are things that we even can tackle because there are specific code cases and things like that. Do we want to go to our priorities and then come back and maybe try to discuss, do we want to go to our priorities list and then maybe come back and try to discuss some of those things if we, if somebody comes up with anything intelligent to say about any of them that we haven't already said when they were brought up before.
One quick question.
Sure.
Going back to the float.
Oh, yeah. So.
Get the float.
So if we do get some people that will donate stuff and can we offer them a little banner space on the, on the float?
Oh, I'm not sure with it.
I, I don't have it. Find out whether it's allowed by the rules of them, but yeah.
Okay.
Well, the rules might be.
I don't know what the wellie rules are on that, but.
Okay.
But, but I don't see why not because like.
When they have the.
Yeah, they have, they have.
Isn't it hosted by the Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah.
Taking place in Wellington?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think so because I think that different places have like the name of their business. So if you can put the name of a business on there, we should be able to put.
Right.
You know, alligators sponsored.
Well, I might be able to get like some. Well, I might be able to get like some Christmas themed clothes from the, the tax store that I could wear and just give back to them or something.
Right. Okay. Yeah. I think, I think that you can do that. Be careful asking for donations, right? Cause we're council members. We can't do that. But loans, maybe you can.
Yeah.
Just check with ethics. Make sure that you're not stepping over a line with that because.
Yeah.
You may not be able to ask even for a loan. Just, just, you may be able to. I just want to make sure. I just don't want you to.
I'll find it.
Step outside and we may need to just put it all in the hands of public works and let them ask for things for us. So, um, just be clear. Yeah. Maybe you can recommend where they might shop and what size they might. Okay. Uh, so can we take a two minute PP break? Cause you know me, Marge, I have to go to the bathroom. She laughs at me. You guys can carry on if you want to, although I don't want to miss this discussion of the priorities, but I do have to go to the bathroom. So you, I'd like to take a two minute PP break, but if you want to go.
You kind of clump some of these together. You want to talk about kind of.
No, I, I, I was just kind of breezing through it and I just, I think, I think what we need to do is we need to, you know, what's your, what, what are your five priorities? What are your five priorities? What are your, and, and kind of see and see where those align. And then I think we can, cause this list is, uh, land use and code modernization. Then you got another code compliance effectiveness. Infrastructure mobility is a big category. You know, environmental stewardship, sustainability. Uh, governance and organizational capacity. I mean, they're, they're grouped. I mean, somebody did a real good job about grouping these. Um, fiscal sustainability. I mean, this, these are all hot button items, but I think we need to, you know, kind of.
Okay. I'm going to write down my top five.
As how they are on the list or just top five?
No, you're, you're like overall, not, I mean, I guess you could go specific, but your overall, what you think the top five, what your top five are, or even top 10, if you wanted to, but.
See, is there anything I needed to write down?
No.
Okay. All right. How about if we just go around and have everybody say what their top five are and let's see how many we agree on. What do you think? Lisa, top five.
Uh. Solidifying basics.
I'd, I'd, that's a little vague.
Basics. I mean, like. I think we kind of touched on it with the staff, staff being, you know, people not getting conflicting information when they come into town hall, you know, the town just being.
Communication.
Solid basics.
Communication, consistent communication.
Consistent communication, certainly, um.
And performance.
And. Yeah. And again, council prioritized code enforcement.
Okay. Hold on. You're going too fast with me. Your first one is consistent communication. Your second one is?
Council prioritized code enforcement.
Council prioritized, but council's not supposed to be involved in code enforcement.
Well, we can, we can specify and say industrial needs to be a.
When Todd's first meeting, we talked about what should be done.
Okay.
We can't say it goes.
Just ask me a question.
And he.
Right. Okay. And your third one, Lisa?
Addressing longstanding problem properties, which.
Long standing.
Who they are.
Is that part of number two, or is that a new one? That's your third one?
Different.
Longstanding problem properties. Okay. Your fourth one?
Uh, come back to me.
Come back to you for, come back to you for four and five. Okay. Todd?
I'm in agreement with the two with the code enforcement, um, for sure.
One and two?
What? No, the first one was something about communication.
Right.
So two and three.
Okay. So Todd, Lisa's.
So that, that, yeah, mine's one and two on that.
Okay. Lisa's two and three. Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
Um, I, I think we need to do things about Okeechobee Boulevard and getting the culverts replaced underneath it.
Okay. Okeechobee Boulevard.
And getting the weers put back in.
And culverts and weers. Okay. Okay. Number four?
It would be nice if we could use some of our tree mitigation to try to put some trees along Okeechobee Boulevard to have the tree lined street like Royal Palmage Boulevard. And I know we'd have to get permission from the county, which they're probably going to say, no.
And tear them down.
That doesn't mean we can't try.
Okay. Your fourth?
Um, come back to me on that.
Okay. Come back to him for four and five. Marge?
Yeah. Um, the manure issue.
Is your number one? Okay. And what else?
Uh, the, um, hold the line on, um, tangerine to southern being the commercial corridor.
So establish. Establish your out, define the commercial corridor. Okay. Okay. Define commercial corridor. All right. Your third one?
And then, um, the one that, um, Lisa had is number one.
Communication, consistent communication.
Yeah.
Do you have a four and five?
No.
Okay. Do I need to come back to you?
Yeah.
Okay. Paul? Oh, wait a minute. Let me write. I'm writing really fast as I can. Okay. Go ahead. What's your?
Ditto.
Ditto on what?
Well, yeah, no, I've, I've just been, that's everything that I say as well. I mean.
You don't have anything new to add to the list.
At this point, no, I, because basically what I was saying before is I think we, you know, well, you didn't give your fuck, Mayor.
Uh, I'm happy to, uh, I'm trying to get some from you, but you have nothing to add to this list that you see as glaringly missing from this list.
I would add vested rights.
I'm sorry?
Vested rights.
Black there of.
I got, I got two applications right here in this bag.
You are for number four, adding vested rights? Okay. Okay.
I agree with Todd's Okeechobee Boulevard.
Tell me what you mean by vested rights, like clearly defined it, or I guess. Give me more information, what you mean by vested rights.
Well, we can come back to it.
Okay.
Once everybody's got their, their stuff down.
Paul, you had nothing to add to the list.
No, I concur with everything that's being said. I think at this time.
So, so I, I have an issue with like.
I reserve my time for later.
For Virginia brought up the fact that we are allowed to clear cut if it's bona fide ag. And I know you and I have discussed it before, and there is nothing in state statute that says we have to allow that. What allows that is our code. Our code says if you're bona fide ag, you can clear cut and that shouldn't be that way.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm telling you, if you don't, if, if we don't clearly say you have to give X amount of conservation land or something like that, you can go in there and clear cut it and put plants on, you, you can plant peppers on the whole thing, Todd.
But based on what? There's not, you, when we had this discussion before, you said, oh, if you're bona fide ag, you can do that. Well, you can, because our code says that, but there's nothing in state law that says that. So we could change our code.
State law says we can't limit that.
Yes, you can.
How do you, how do you limit that?
Right. The Farm Act has to do with nuisance lawsuits, right? Not with tree mitigation. Six oh four dot five zero is about non-residential farm buildings. Non-residential farm buildings aren't clear cutting trees, right? It's different things. There is no, my point is there is no state statute that says you can clear cut trees.
So you want to, so you want to for your four to change code, change code regarding clear cutting?
Yes.
Change or address code regarding clear cutting.
Correct.
Okay.
Ag, ag clear cutting.
Code regarding ag clear cutting.
I, I have found nothing in the statute that says.
I doubt very seriously he's going to come out and say, you can clear cut.
Well, I know, but you understand the right to farm act has to do with nuisances, right? That's what.
Has a lot to do with it. Yes.
No, that's all it has to do with is nuisance. If, if you look at that statute eight, two, three, it has to do with nuisances, right? Smells, noise, water and that sort of thing. That's not trees, right?
So, so okay, because you're way better, let's just, you're way better quoting codes, statutes, et cetera, the numbers than I am. So what, what statute allows you to build whatever building you want and have no restrictions?
Six oh four dot five zero. It's specific to non-residential farm buildings.
And fencing.
And fencing and signs.
And nothing else?
Correct. Correct.
That's it.
Yes. There's another exemption. If you have wetlands and you impact the wetlands, that's under three, seven, three, something. I can't give you that exact number on that one. That says you can impact wetlands if you're agr- agriculture.
Right.
I'm not talking about wetlands. We're talking about clear cutting pine trees and that sort of thing and oak trees.
Right.
So like I said, there is no statute that I'm aware of, or any attorney I've dealt with is aware of that says you can clear cut if it's bona fide ag.
It's my.
Allowing that is our code that says that.
But I disagree in that it's my understanding that state statute right to farm act, um, basically inhibits the county and municipal level to impinge on right to farm.
You can't, you can't duplicate. It says you can't duplicate code. So if the state has, um, codes that have to do with best management practices and whatnot, then we can't have something that duplicates it, right? But the statute.
You can duplicate it exactly. You just.
Right.
Can't change it.
Right.
Right.
So, but that statute eight, two, eight?
Six oh four?
No.
No.
Eight, two, three point four has to do with nuisances. It's strictly about nuisances. The right to farm act is a nuisance.
I would.
We got.
Forward to hearing what, what that definition is, because it's my understanding that.
Well, obviously we're going to get into all of these specifics when we talk about it, if we put it on our priority list. Okay. I can run down.
We, we can, we can ask Jeff to give us a conclusion as to can we change the code legally to stop from clear cut?
Right.
Right. That's, that's the advantage of having an in-house attorney.
Okay. Okay. Um. All right. Uh, my priorities, well, my number one priority is, is drainage. Um, and that's huge. I mean, that's just a huge one. So I'd be.
It's like world peace.
I understand for world peace, but it is the biggest, most pervasive, um, issue that we have in the town. So the drainage, um, but I'm happy to, uh, but it's also an ongoing issue. I'm happy to have it be addressed by the culverts and weers that we talked about on Okeechobee, because I think that's a good start. Although I'd like to add some of the neighborhood projects that we talked about, some of the smaller neighborhood projects. So I'd like to consider those. The, um, trail connectivity is my second big one. Um, and we have taken some strides towards that, um, with the, um, addition of like along Gruber and along Citrus, trying to add some, some north, south, I mean, east, west connectivity with the north, south connectivity we have, but I'd like to continue with that project.
Did you see the horse sign at C and?
Right. Trail connectivity and signage. I should put, thank you. That's very good. Um, and, and I'm really okay with the ones everybody else has too. You know, I think this is a great list, guys. Um, let me think of what else were my, uh, priorities, uh, continuing our lobbying efforts for state, whatever funding we can get for some of these projects. So continuing the lobbying efforts was another, yeah, lobbying efforts. Well, that encompasses, that encompasses all of that.
That, that's kind of the underlying driver of all these.
Right. I understand, but we're talking about priorities and these are things that I see as a priority and you can knock them off the list later if you want to. Um, and I, I had a, can I see the list real quick? I had a whole bunch of them the other day and that I had to kind of knock some out, but, um.
While, while you're thinking about that, so.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
What, what, one of my conflicts that I have going through this list is, it was like Paul said, staff runs the day-to-day operation. They know what's going on and what's hot and what's like dragging them down, you know? So it's one thing for us to come up as a community and say, these are our issues. Staff might have a different set of issues where it's like, we have to deal with this every single day. We would love to get this solved and it's not going to be on this list.
We approved a contract that said we need to do this.
Do what?
What we're doing.
No, I get that.
So we got, I mean, I, I get what you're saying. So we got to give our clear direction with, you know, if they, if something pops up or that needs our attention more than say.
Right.
You know, old code issues, right? Then yeah, absolutely. We would address it, but you know, we're, we're on a clock for this. You know, nobody else has been able to, to get it down past a hundred and sixty-five.
Right.
Right? So I kind of where I was, what I was saying before, and stop me if you're done taking note, wherever you want me to stop. But so basically what we have is.
So when you wanted to add?
No, no, actually you hit, you hit all mine.
Okay.
Everybody hit all mines. That's why I was just.
But it's great news.
No, that's good. So, but basically what I'm getting at is, is some of this stuff, some, you got to start bulk, right? So we got code enforcement, right? You got code enforcement.
And unfortunately some of our things adds more, more to, more to their task, right?
Right, right. No, absolutely. But yeah, I mean.
But it is.
So.
Disagree. I think that code enforcement's focus has been on something that. And I'm going to say something that probably most of you will disagree, BTRs. Why are we wasting time on BTRs? Yeah, they're making some money, but what's, what's the return on that, right? Does it cost us 80,000 to chase 100,000? I mean.
Well, yeah, the reality is BTR should be all, almost an automated process. That should be, you know.
And it shouldn't take up code enforcement focus and time. That should be almost like a.
So.
An also ran in the background kind of program. So.
So.
Well, I think that all of us that have sat on the outside have talked about, you know, this needs to be council prioritized. How many times does council give in direction for Okeechobee Boulevard, for example, right? And we all know this goes back to the most egregious properties, right? That have done things. We also have issues with code enforcement where the magistrate is in the process of dealing with a property and then staff interferes with the process and pulls it out. That is why, when you called me the other day and you want to talk about something that we couldn't talk about and I said, no, afterwards. The lean reduction po- policy is almost an aberration in that if staff interferes with the magistrate process, and I asked when this lean reduction policy came up, how many times has the magistrate reduced the money down to less than what we want it to get? And nobody could provide me that because it's usually staff inserting themselves into a process. And we all know the most famous one, right?
Right.
Was that, was that a defined process or the lean? Cause if, when it's a fine, it's one thing. And when it's a lean is different. So are you talking about a fine or a lean? Cause there's two different things.
I think this was fine reduction, right?
Right.
So, uh, but I, I think that we, much like a BTR should be sort of an automated process. Once a property enters into that magistrate process, I think that should function through that system. I have the property at the corner, northwest corner of B in Okeechobee. The magistrate had started, um, fines. They were accumulating fines. And then I have the code inspector dismissing the case. How does the code inspector dismiss the case after the magistrate has ruled on?
What we're getting.
That should be the magistrate.
Clearing off down the rabbit hole. I, I get where, I get where you're going. I get what you're saying, but we're, I guess what I'm telling, how we get from a hundred and sixty-five?
Right.
Okay.
I have my last two, if I can. Okay. What did I say? Well, there, my, um, fourth one was doing something about trash and debris. I know the coastal contract is up this year. We need to look at some possibilities of who are we going to renew with, right? And we also have to look at, is there a way to split off like the debris collection, which is a bulk of the cost and, and contract that out? Is there a way to do recycling? Like, you know, where you have to bring it to containers at certain places, you know, are there ways to mitigate the trash cost to the town, which is high. And we have to presume that coastal is going to come in, since it's gone up every year, we have to presume they're going to come up higher this year. And that even if we go out to bid, we're going to have, you know, it's, it's a competitive market, right? It's going to be higher. So I'd like to start exploring different things to do with our trash and debris, which kind of goes with the poop. I mean, they kind of go hand in hand. And then, um, I'd also like us to work on refining or honing our strategic plan, which this is kind of a first step towards. So this is, is good with that, but making sure that we have a strategic plan for the next couple of years in place to keep things moving forward. So those are my.
Well, I wouldn't have thought about solid ways, because that's coming to us no matter if it's a last priority or.
Here's the problem that I have. I, I get that and it is coming, but here's why I think it's a priority, because one thing that I'm in agreement with Lisa on is that a lot of times these things come to us
less.
At the last minute and with no chance for us to really do any research and do anything about it and explore all the options and possibilities. And I think we need to make it a priority to start looking at the options and possibilities now, not a month before we have to take a vote on it when, you know, the bids are in. I, I think that it all goes in hand in hand. We put out the RFP, we get the bids.
Can we make a policy that these renewing events, like a budget, like a, a vendor, something like that, that we have to have them a minimum of four months prior?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I don't.
Discussion pop thing.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't know if people are willing to, I don't know if, I don't know if there's any laws of restrictions on like that you can have to put it out a certain amount of like an RFP, like it can only be 30 days before, 60 days before, 90 days before. I don't hear Mr. Codification over here.
That's not, I'm talking, I'm talking about, um, while they may be at a staff level discussing it internally, council needs to be brought into that by a certain date, whether that's, we're still 90 days out, more than 90 days.
Major contract renewals?
Major contract renewals, budgeting.
You know that this is coming up in June. Don't come bring it to, in, in May for the first reading, April.
Like we've got the attorney in December of 26th and we've got the town manager one in September. We need to have these things hitting our agenda, public discussion level.
Yeah. No vote, just discussion generally.
Okay. So I'm going to put that as your number five. How are you going to word it?
I think you, you said something about, um, renewals.
Okay. Renewals of major contracts.
As a major contracts and budgeting.
Or general concepts as to where we want to go. Like, like if we decide, like we could decide today or not decide today, but we could knock around and say, maybe we should get rid of recycling, right? So when they, so at least if you're going to do the recycling contract, break that out. So we have that option to not include recycling.
Right, and that would be an important discussion before-
Way before-
Oh my God, we gotta get the RFQ down. It's, oh my God, and it's-
Yeah, yeah, that's, that seems to be how we do a lot of stuff. And, and then it's like hurry up and wait, right? Because then it takes a freaking year to get what we just- We had to vote on by now, but it takes a year to get it implemented. So renewal of major contracts, concepts, four month lead time?
I would say, what's that, 120 days?
Okay.
So minimum, like some of them might need more time.
Four month lead time. Okay. So we can actually really start exploring it. And even if where we really start exploring it is in these meetings where we can be a little bit more candid and have a little bit more discussion, but we have to know they're coming. And when we come to these meetings, we have to have tools like this, you know, uh, which is, you know, here are your possibilities with solid waste. Here are your possibilities with debris. Here's your possibilities with, we can use some of those illegal debris vendors in town. Just kidding, everybody.
And to, and to add to that, you know, very often we'll see development come forward and it'll say staff recommends approval.
They always recommend approval.
Well, and, and I've had this conversation with Jim Fleishman because he says, well, because we've weeded out 80% of them, right? So, so the 20% that we think meet, that's why that's the only ones that come forward and everything gets approved. I think before that's put in writing, before it says staff recommends approval, I think each council member should meet with that staff member who's making that recommendation. So you could say, well, what about A, B, and C? Did you keep this in mind? Well, no, I didn't. Let me go back and look. So maybe staff would be, wouldn't be making-
Do you want to micromanage the staff?
It's not micromanaging.
It is micromanaging the staff. Absolutely. That's what it's doing.
It's about discussing the project that we're going to be voting on.
I agree, but you're micromanaging the staff at that point.
Before he puts it in writing and says he recommends approval. Because I would sit down with Fleishman at the meeting, you know, we, something's on the agenda tonight. It's staff, staff recommended approval. And I go talk to Jim, did you think about A, B, and C? No, I didn't. Well, it's too late. It's already in writing now that says you recommend approval. I should have been, we, each council member should have met with you two weeks ago before you put in writing that says staff recommends approval. That's my, that's my point. How do we get to the, how do we try to-
Well, hopefully that's four month lead time will give us enough.
But that was just about Congress. That was just about contracts, not necessarily.
It's actually says contracts and concepts.
Okay, as long as staff understands that it, it's about-
It's not everything that you do.
Okay.
Okay, and development concept?
And Paul, do you, you understand or do you disagree with that still?
What?
You, you said I'm micromanaging by meeting with staff before they put in writing that says they recommend approval. You-
No, I, by you tell, by you telling Jim, did you think of this, 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 you're micromanaging staff. You're not, he's not your director of work. I'm just saying.
I'm not directing him to do anything. I'm just saying, here's something that I thought about, maybe you did.
No, I was just saying, Todd.
I hate the way these boys fight, don't you?
I'm such-
You don't see any of us girls fighting. I'm being sexist right?
Oh, no, it's, 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 it's much more subdued. So it's okay.
Okay. All right. This is our list, guys. I think we pass it along to staff and have them, we-
I, I do want to add one.
Go ahead.
Because I, we didn't prioritize anything. I just add that. We did not prioritize anything. But, um, I, I would like to add to listen. I think we need to look at, at the clarification of how SB 180 affects any code changes we, we make, and if we could make them with a future date of-
Can't we task the committee with looking into that?
Well, that's, that's where my next little-
SB 180 and-
How, how it pertains to like Rule Vista, for example. They came back after SB 180 was passed and said, we can't do Rule Vista because it restrict, it makes things more restrictive. But if we were to put language in there or whatever, or wasn't, we did not, we did not enforce it until after, you know, and it's there. Once, once SB 180 dissolves-
Effective X.
I even affect, not even effective X. I'm saying if we put it into place, we can put it into place, but as long as we don't enforce it.
But I think it says adopt.
Oh, it does say adopt. Well, as I'm saying, if there's some way we could-
I had thought about that before too.
But it could be prepped.
It could be prepped and ready. So, so that way when, when it dissolves, it's there.
Right.
Right?
Okay, so what I'm putting, what I put for yours, Paul, is SB 180 and how it pertains to home rule. So what I'm going to propose is that we, that I give this list to staff, that they compile this into one list and bring it to us at the meeting. And then we then rate these, prioritize these. Does that make sense?
Well, so many of them overlap. How many they-
That's what I'm saying. So many of them do overlap.
I honestly think we ought to, we probably ought to, we could probably sit here right now and go, what do we think is more important? Code, uh, code enforcement, consistency, communication, efficiency with staff, infrastructure, ULDC, and public interest projects like trail connectivity. Cause let's be real, that, that is a public interest thing.
All equally important. And I think a lot of them, like the vested rights issue are things that have been kicked, this cans that have been kicked down the road for 20 years.
It can't be any-
Which is why it puts us in the situation we're in right now.
Right, and then we're seeing a proliferation. So I, my theory is, is to the point of the FDA having an agriculture component to it. You have created, and I, I say you in the overarching sense of the town governance, has created a situation that compliance is a hardship, a serious hardship with FDA and engineers and the, and the feedback is, takes months and months for people to get through. So you have to have a compliant, willing individual to want to check all the boxes. And I think Virginia's point of the property she brought up, this particular individual just hit a wall and said, I can't afford to go forward because the, the, it's so onerous what is being required. Instead of, I want to be ag exempt because I'm building a horse farm. FDA through FEMA allows certain leniency for agriculture properties and some of the overinterpretation by the town. So what happens is those people say, I need to sell. I, I can't keep dumping money into this project that I know I can never fully realize. I'm willing to take a, a small loss or break even. I just need to get out. Then you have the people that come in and we all know them. There's some that are quite visible on Okeechobee right now that basically give the town the middle finger, put up signage, get ready to, to just go into business. And so what's happening is you have a proliferation of the non-compliant and the non-compliant that have no intention of ever becoming compliant. So that, that problem is growing exponentially. And this was something I talked to Jamie Tidcombe about because he's like, I'm fixing the problem. I said, you are driving the behavior underground because you're not going to get compliance this way. And to Jane's point about the RVs, I have said, you have documentation that's so long, it took me 30 minutes of reading it back and forth and back and forth. And apparently Jane and I still don't understand it. So we'll be reading it again. Make a single form. I have septic, it's permitted. Check, check. I, I pump it out. Check. Here's your 50 bucks. What you're going to find out pretty quickly is who's willing to be compliant. Then you can tighten the requirements as they go, right? You see, there's a level, there's a threshold of behavior and Lockshead Grows is notorious for being people who don't want to play by the rules, right? That's, it's historically what the town is known, what the community is known for, right? Love it and leave it alone, right? So I think some of the ways of bringing compliance have to be a little more tailored to, to the problem where you can, you can narrow it down as much as possible and still be within the, the intent of, of the, of the effect of getting that policy in place, but trying to bring it in a way that encourages compliance, encourages investment in the town. You, you sent a letter to a county, um, person that said, we support the equestrian industry, connectivity of the trails. We, we've never successfully supported our equestrian industry in this town. We've actually made it more expensive to develop a horse farm now in Lockshead Grows than in Wellington. Now you can buy the land for less, but you got a lot of out, oh, outflow. So I think that part of this exercise should be identifying what is the number one driver of land values and then making sure that everything we decide channels toward achieving that goal, right? So there has to be an overarching goal that keeps these things in the priorities that, that achieve that ultimate desire, which I think most people want. Their land value protected. They want their quality of life and their land value protected. So that was a lot of words to get to that. So, sorry.
Well, we had equestrian trails on there, right? So that was a good thing. Code enforcement is about cleaning up. So these people want to move here, right? Instead of moving to the dump, right?
But I think we also need to look at things that make it too hard to comply. We, we should be looking at adopting the FEMA rules for ag. We should be looking at tailoring or-
FDAs are common across the board. It's not just here. They call them different things, right? They call FDAs different things in different towns. We call it FDA flood development, something, application, right? It's called, it's, you know, so flood is in the building code. It's in, it's in the status, you know, it's, it's federal, right? The thing, the thing, the, the biggest issue that I've come to realize in the past six months, because I'm getting more calls about it than I ever got when I was, wasn't on council and I was actually doing inspections out here. The biggest issue was, um, you know, to, to try and be compliant, like you said, I'm going to put in my FDA there. It was costing more and more and more money because of the amount of times that it came back with nitpicky, one, one comment, one comment, one comment. And that's why we have contractors that don't want to work in our town. We have- Engineers that don't want to work in our town. So I think with the ordinance, ordinance resolution, whichever, that we just passed, adopting that list of um, possible vendors for engineering firms and, and-
Getting rid of-
Yeah, engineering was the issue, right? So now, now that that is out of the picture, I think we're totally done with them now, right? Or we should be.
But you and I had this conversation before we sat up here. If I want to build a building in the middle of my five acres to house six horses, I should not have to develop the entire five acres. You said county only deals with the impact so many feet around the building. Our town, thank you, former water control district people, overdefined and have, have created this behemoth
Right.
of, of a hurdle to clear.
I guess my point is, I, I think, I think we're going to see some, some movement in that.
I hope so.
With, with, because- Yeah, with a different engineering firm. Cause the, the need for compensatory storage over the whole property, if you're not developing the whole property. If I want a wooded property, as long as it's not all invasives, right? There's some debate about that. Todd and I were debating about that, you know, whether you have to remove every single invasive if you're just developing around the house. But there is some, some argument to, yes, all invasives need to be cut. All invasives need to be gone. And then you have other people on the other side of the table arguing, arguing going, well, holly trees retain water and stuff anyway. So we need to keep the holly trees. So why are we? But the reality is, is the whole property is holly and Australian. So it all has to go. It has to be clear cut, right? So it's, it's a big, and I think-
But I think the FEMA thing is something that we can bring back.
But it's all based on, our FDA and all the, all the flood regulations is based on-
It's overinterpreted by our town is what I'm telling you.
And those people are gone, is what I'm saying.
They're still doing it.
No, they're, oh, 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 one, one sec. They're, they're, but they're gone.
Our rules don't say it. It's the way they're being implemented.
Yeah, the way it was interpreted.
There's nothing we can change in our rules. It's the way they're being interpreted by the engineers.
Mr., Mr. Peters and Ingenuity are gone. So things are going to change.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. And if they don't, we need to address it, but it, it, I think there's light at the end of the tunnel from what I'm seeing.
Workbench that needs updating that from the, it's initial adoption, I believe in 2017. And maybe we should be bringing that back and looking at it, however that language is in there, you know, maybe there's something in there that, that could-
Maybe when they've resolved to the engineering firm that's going to do it, can come in and give us a presentation and we can ask those questions. Is there something we need to change? So this doesn't happen.
Maybe we require them to provide a checklist. The engineering firm has to provide a checklist that land don't have to go through.
Staff always gets mad at me because that's what I always say. Did you give the person the checklist when you went to get that easement? Did you give them a checklist and did you have them so that you, the people coming back and saying, well, I never signed, did you, when it got handed to them?
That goes back to consistent communication.
When, when you do this, you initial, when you go back and have it signed, you initial, they initial. And then you put that completed checklist in the file. So again, that may be micromanaging, but I was like, this will circumvent people being able to say, I wasn't informed. I didn't know. I never signed it. So, and, and it will, and it will make sure that you do your job and your due diligence so that nothing slips through the cracks, that you didn't forget to tell them that they have the option of splitting the easement and only giving this portion of it or that portion. You know, you know what I mean? So like that this, uh, uh, you gotta come up with a series of checklists for each process that we have, and then you have to adhere to the checklist. And whether those are in whatever the hell program that they, you guys keep bringing up, I don't know. No, no, not FDA, the, the, a sauna. Whether that's part of that, I don't know, or can be part of that, I don't know. But I think that that's critical because that's a part of communication. It's making sure that that communication is, is not just given, but heard and received and understood.
Of experience.
Right.
The issue with the FDAs was it would, it would be submitted and they would get one correction comment. And, and there's 10, there's 10 that should have been given.
And it was going to different people as far as I understand. So it would go to one and then they would give their titles and then it would go back and they go to another.
Excessive fees that we're getting paid back to the engineer for making the corrections is going to be gone. So that, that, that stuff is so-
But if we adopt the ag also, that will also curtail some of the engineer-
But you can't adopt just ag because not everybody's just ag.
I'm, I didn't say that. I just said, if it is an ag classified property or building for ag purposes, FEMA has, um, solutions for that that are not as high a hurdle as a residential development, right?
I, right, but I, I, nobody's, I don't think, I don't think anybody, I mean, I haven't looked at one, but I, I don't think we need to have, you know, they're, they're not putting in catch basins with, with wet retention.
10 acres and all that crazy.
Listen, again,
Happened.
I, I went, I went and did an inspection on a, on a, on a, on a garage, a metal garage was built in the back corner of a two acre property. And I, I called Jamie up and I went, what the hell's going on? He's like, what do you mean? What are you talking about? I said, we literally, or y'all literally made, this guy put a berm and there was a berm this big, right? And this wide. It was, it was ridiculous. Around 360 around the, the garage. This makes so, no sense. Yeah. I, this side, this side area, area of development. Yes. You know, there's existing house, blah, blah. Yeah, there's, there's ways to work it. And I think we just need to revisit it. But I, I think, I guess to my, my, what I'm trying to say is I think in the near future, we're going to see some, you know, I hope to see contractors coming back to our neighborhood and engineers coming back to our neighborhood and willing to work with our, because we, we're, we're in a new program.
Taking some steps.
Yeah, positive steps. Yeah.
Virginia has something to say.
I got a public comment on, on this topic of FDA and the ad. And to quote that contractors that constantly change and district supervisors, et cetera, you know, understand and interpret when people change all the time. If it booms town, it is upon you. And if there's an ordinance, hey, let's make sure engineers, let's make sure contractors, vendors, you are aware, not hoping they understand. You need to take the horse by the reins and direct them. These are the different FDAs in our town. So when somebody comes in here who is ag and they have five acres, 10 acres, their FDA does not have to cover the entire property. They don't have a flood zone on their entire property. But if there's a portion of their property that is flood zone, oh my God, the whole property needs an FDA. That is the biggest problem in this town. So again, as the council, you need to have some confirmation, not hope, of what these vendors and contractors understand. That's like, that's why people have different builders. Cause some contractors just don't understand building code or try and do a different thing. Thank you.
Unfortunately, to your point about the portion of the property being in a flood zone and a portion not being in the flood zone, the property is the property. So the property is looked at as like a little island. And it, so if a portion of the property falls in a special, I do this for a living, Cass. The, the, the portion of property falls in a special flood hazard area, then it, it affects the entire property essentially. So if you're developing a house, even if you're developing in the egg zone and half the property, if you have five acres, it has a house and, or just say, say an acre, you have an acre that has the house and the house in the front and the back half is, is special flood hazard area, it still affects what you have to do with the house as far as elevation and things like that. So, and that's all. NFIP, FEMA, the whole nine yards, it all has to do with the flood. So, you know, I say we bring it back. I say, you know, we, we had somebody that was working, he went and got his flood plain manager. We decided to go do something else. So hopefully the next guy's got his flood plain manager certificate and, you know, or we can turn on one of the engineers and we get some clear direction and work in a positive direction. I'm, I'm saying in the near future, right now, till we can do that, I think we're moving positive steps.
The checklist I think will go a long way.
It's a big thing.
So.
Did you want me to put checklists on?
FEMA, FEMA checklist, FDA checklist, whatever, development checklist.
FEMA, so checklists.
I think checklist in general.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's about
What we're talking about FEMA or FDA easement, any, any other category?
Easements, permits. I think permits have gotten a better job.
Before we come on the checklist for any kind of FDA, whatever, I think we need some clarification as to what the, what, what the FEMA recommended, whatever, et cetera, for, for ag, et cetera. So.
Correct me if I'm wrong. We haven't, they haven't clarified. The community standards department has not clarified which of the engineers are gonna do what things, like certain, it's my understanding that we had like five on the list and like some of them were good at this and some of them were good at that. And that was the reason to get five approved. So we kind of first have to reexamine which
One engineering firm had to come back and go through two readings and months or whatever, and they could be able to pivot. And like, this guy's not working out.
So do we want to ask for, uh, well, that item will be back on the agenda, right? Because, yeah. We didn't have it. Right. So that'll be back on the agenda. So these are all great questions that we can ask. So, um, I'm gonna make a suggestion that, um, that I take this, because I'm unable this way to, to do any kind of prioritizing. And I think everybody else is too. So my suggestion is gonna be is that I take this list and I compile it and I send it to the town clerk tomorrow. And the town clerk sends it out to all of us so that I'm not directly communicating with anybody. The town clerk sends it out to all of us. I'll try to, I'll try to put things together that are like things on people's lists. And I'll do the list and I'm not gonna put it in any order. I'm just gonna, maybe I'll put it in alphabetical order. So I'm not putting any advice in on it or something, but I'll, I'll compile the list. I'll send it to Valerie. She'll send it to each of us and then we prioritize it, you know, put, I don't know, a star next to what's important, really important to us or whatever. Let's see how many we wind up with. We, I think we're all in agreement that we want to come up with 10 things.
Well, I still have an opening here for number five and something else I want to potentially.
Okay, but you were also okay with some of the ones.
Can build on this. I think this is a good start.
It's a great start. And then we can prioritize this list. And then like I said, soon as something drops off, there's something else to go on here.
But like
there's always something else. But this way it's, it's making it potentially achievable. One of the things that I always say about this community, Lisa, kind of to piggyback on what you said is that we have, we, we've bred a culture of rule breakers.
Yeah.
Right? And one of the ways that we've bred a culture of rule breakers is by creating a whole bunch of things that are not really enforceable.
Yeah.
Um, and so, or that either that we don't enforce or that are not enforceable.
Pitch in the middle of Costco.
Right. And the, and the example that I'll give is, um, you know, one, just one of many problems that we deal with, the town deals with, when I say we, I mean them, um, on a day to day basis is, you know, try to enforce codes on a back five. It's impossible.
Yeah.
Right? It's impossible. So.
So the complaint lets you on their, those behind them and lets you on the property.
They were the complaint, then they let you on. And who knows if somebody in the back five is dumping poop all over the ground, if their neighbor doesn't see it, if they're dumping on the, you know, you know what I'm saying? So I, I think that we need to be really present to that and to try to make things possibly achievable and enforceable. So I'd, I'd like to start with this list of maybe, I don't know, 15 items that we have here. And then try to get some of these checked off, right? Because some of them, like the vested rights has been getting, that's been, those problems along Okeechobee and those vested rights have been an issue in the town since I moved here in 2011. And I'm certain that they were ongoing prior to that. And, and so, and we have made, in some cases, some of them bigger and monsters, not only by letting them go on for so long, but by, um, you know, because that gives the, them a certain amount of leverage that we've let it go on for so long, right? And so therefore they maybe have a claim to vested rights. I'm not saying they do. I don't want to get into that argument right now.
I know.
I'm just saying the fact that we, we haven't solidified, made a decision and gotten something done for, you know, 20 years on some of these things, some of them I'm sure even longer. Encourages more bad behavior and it, and gives the people who are behaving badly some footing.
I think as we drill down on this, it's actually gonna let us, because I know I've gotten a couple of calls that our committee members are not very happy because whether, whether, for whatever reason, like some of them haven't been meeting, right? So, you know, I'm not talking about fact. I'm talking about like, uh, I think it was somebody on ULDC or something, I forget who it was off the top of my head. But I think we can actually, and I know when I was sat on ULDC, Jeff looked at me and said, you can't decide what the next meeting is because it's direction to council. And we found out at a meeting. Like we can, we can say, hey, listen,
Once we get this, we can't.
Asking ULDC to work on this code section or work on defining this corridor. Or, you know, we're ta- ta- tasking, uh, RetGAC was, I guess, they decided to go over the sign thing again. Right? And that's, but you know, when I was on RetGAC before it got shut down, we had approved a whole sign package. It was pretty much done. So it got mixed around. So we actually say, hey, listen, we want you to look at, look at the whole map. Find out where we have, you know, easements where we don't have easements. Let's, let's go back over that map and define that. Cause I know we have a book of maps. And it's old and we might have gained some easements by that, by now or whatever. And we can actually start. And that will help whittle some of this stuff down.
A hundred percent. Yeah. Start assigning it out. I agree with you. And it's almost like you read my mind. I, I, I'd like to also add, if you guys don't mind, the gap roads, because those are a constant problem. Let's add the gap roads there. Which I know are funded already. The gap, the roads that like were not finished, have hunks of them not done. Just like, let's get that off the plate. Um, as a priority. So it was almost, almost likely, yeah, North Road being one of them. So it was almost like we planned this little segue, because one of the things that I brought up and, and Jeff was gonna, well, Francine was gonna have Jeff look into it, um, is could we, because this is a daunting list, right? This is a huge daunting list. Now we've picked 10, 15 things off of here that we're gonna try to get done in the next three months, six months, whatever. You know, let's get them done, right? Let's get them handled off our plate and then pick another 10 off of the list, right? But one of the things that I suggested we might also be able to do, but Francine felt that the legality of it or how it could be handled would have to be looked into is to have council, if they chose, prove, choose a council project. And I'll give you an example. Um, Darcy, who is my appointee for, uh, the, uh, Trails Committee, thank you, the Retag Committee, um, has contacted me about, actually interestingly enough, the trees along Okeechobee, for which we have some grant money and things like that. But if I was willing to kind of drive or spearhead that project, right? Reporting back to everybody, this is what, you know, and, and task her with doing things as this committee. Like if there's some way we could structure where we could each kind of pick a project if we wanted to and, and drive, drive some of these projects off the list, something that's important to you on the list. Maybe it's, you know, maybe it's planting trees along Okeechobee. Maybe it's the mural on the side of the southern building, you know, the, the smaller projects, but drive them to a committee and drive the committee. Cause I remember when I first served, served on fact, which was like, I think in 2011, maybe it was 2012. It was a long time ago. But when I first served on it, when I first served on that committee, the structure was that we had a council member who was in, the liaison or in charge of the committee. And that council member was Ryan Liang at the time, came to all of our fact committee meetings and then reported out and made it, you know, and participated basically. Not, not, not directed, but participated or
Right.
Kind of directed, kind of not directed. You get what I'm saying? So I'm looking for a way that maybe we can, we as individuals can help take some of these smaller items off of that huge list, look at and go, you know, well, this is really, the ecology of the canals is really important to Lisa. You know, the trash in the canals, they call it that. So she's gonna try to figure out. Oh, well, but you get what I'm saying. So anyhow, just looking into the legality of it, um.
I'm gonna go to public works on my whip on Craig until he hits the machine out of there.
I'm, I'm not suggesting, I'm suggesting that we kind of be the, like you said, the one who turns the key. You know, and maybe provides a little bit of the oil and a little bit of the lubrication or whatever else, other things you said.
I'd like to see us get some priorities, like moving first, like that might, that might be at three months down the road or four months before we.
I think you get a lot of
I would be afraid it would fracture.
I think we get a lot of traction with committees if we can discern which of these things need to go before committee. I mean, and not everything at the committee needs to be five stinking meetings, right? Not everything, not every, not everything needs to be, you know, I mean, we beat that, what was it?
The sign ordinance that now.
Revamp thing.
Yeah.
We beat that to death and, and I asked for this and then it didn't come back and all, well, we, and we were trying to get it done. Because I, frankly, I wanted the council before the election to, to, you know, to read it and vote it in and be done.
The sign ordinances took how long?
Yeah, there's a whole thing on the sign orders. But I mean,
Yeah.
And we started looking at the sign orders with Retag, RetGAC or whatever, whichever version. Back when I was on it, Fleishman brought that to us.
Right.
You know, he brought us the, the, you know, whichever roads I know, watch it to, you know, whichever roads, the, the main road versus side road, arterial, arterial roads, et cetera. And it's just, you know, so, but I think we can, I think we can hit, we can, if we focus to get it done, we can do it. But I think the key is making like, Lisa was saying, we kind of make sure that we're not getting all these little, oh, this is a fire. We gotta put this out at additions to our agendas and stuff too. Yeah.
Okay. I will type up this list, send it to Val and, uh, have her distribute and then figure out how you want to prioritize it and we'll discuss it on the second of December. So one of the things I wanted to add for my number five, because you added another one, somebody else's, is reclaim water. And, and I've discussed about using reclaimed water to fill the canals.
Reclaim water?
Reclaim water to fill the canals, because they're talking about, we gotta spend millions of dollars on the pump house, right, to fix that. And if we can use reclaimed water for free to fill, to fill the canals, we don't need the necessary, I know the gate structure needs to be fixed anyway.
Yeah.
But the pumping and all that, if we could use reclaimed water instead, we may not even need to pump.
Does the reclaim pipe go right down south?
Right down Okeechobee Boulevard. Yeah. And it was being used for the power plant. And my understanding is they're not using it anymore. So there's huge capacity there for us to use that. And, and maybe we can also incorporate into that, like Altman Farms. You can imagine the amount of water that Altman Farms uses. Maybe they could use that reclaimed water for irrigation instead of It, they get it for free. If it, I'm not, if, my understanding is if you hook up to the reclaimed water, you can use as much as you want. It's unlimited.
Describe how that works.
Which part?
The reclaimed water.
How?
How do you get it?
How do you get it?
It comes down Okeechobee Boulevard. We gotta get to the water utilities department. First, we need to find out, can we use that for, for filling our canals? Cause everybody's like, oh, what's the quality of the water? I don't know. Is it any good coming out of C 51 or out of our ditches? Probably not.
Still waiting for the nutrient report.
Right. So, so it's probably better than that. So we would need to get somebody to check into it to make sure that we can do that.
They're currently building a facility right across the street from the reclamation facility on Hagan Ranch Road. And it's a big RO facility. And within the near fut- within the near future, it'll be, yeah, it'll be potable, potable water.
So, so they're not they're not gonna give it away, reclaim water. They're gonna reuse it.
Well, listen, they, they injected in the ground there as well. They're just looking for, you know, that, it's actually happening in California right now.
Right.
Um, currently, and they're looking for alternate ways, because as we have drier seasons and things like that, and the, you know, the salt intrusion that's happening, you know, without going down a rabbit hole, you know, so they're looking at alternate methods and then spend a bunch of, uh, water meter money on, on getting this done. But yeah, so that, my buddy was actually telling me about that the other day.
So, yeah, I mean, that's something I think we should try, try to get on it.
Like you put a faucet into the canal, right? I mean, how?
Yeah, essentially.
Yeah, I, I think essentially, yeah. I mean, you know, you put in, you put in the, the lift station to pump it out.
No, no, it's not. It's pressurized.
I know. I'm saying you put in a simple lift station to pump it out into the pipe and it goes down to the facility and it just comes back down the road. So tee it off somehow, I'm sure.
Yeah, right, right there at Okeechobee.
Kind of waistgate type of scenario. No, no pun intended.
This I've been trying to find out since I was sheriff of the Water Patrol District, just to show you how slow thing there is. How many people are, actually have permits to pump out of the canals? It, it versus how many people are pumping out of the canals for their irrigation purposes and try to get a handle on that too. So that could all be part of this, you know, trying to get another problem that's been around for a really long time.
But you can imagine, oh man, how much water do they use?
Why not? I mean, to, to that point though, I don't know.
They can't use the reclaimed water, is my understanding, because they're all natural, the gas property.
Oh.
Because they're all that, although I'm not sure how good the water is they're pumping out of the canal.
Right.
I mean, that's what I'm saying. We need to get us, we need to get some.
Well, I'm not sure how much, like Yeah, I don't know if like, say, a, 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 a development uses reclaim in their, in there for their irrigation. I'm not sure if, if they are metered or not.
My understanding is you pay for the hookup.
Yeah.
Two inch pipe, wide open all day, as much as you want. Yeah, they have so much excess of it.
Yeah. The whole The water facility down there or that one, there's a facility, there's a nat- natural nature facility with wetlands and stuff. It's all re-injected. Reclaimed water, yeah.
Right. Lisa had something to say.
March.
Yes.
What would you say was the year the town was established? Was it when the state passed it in oh six? Or when you sat the first council in oh seven?
Oh, six is when the governor signed, then, um, October 10th is when, uh, the residents voted and then uh, voted on whether they wanted or not and the council, and then they were seated in March.
So when would you call it official? The governor's point of it or?
People voted on it, wouldn't you?
I would say the 10th of October was the official.
So my point is, is next year, next fall is 20 years. So I would think if we're gonna do something, we should start thinking now whether we're gonna do some commemorative something.
20th anniversary celebration. Let's add that to the list. Okay.
So I, cause we just had the Founder's Day and the parade and everything. If we're gonna do it, we should start planning it now and, and.
October 10th, you would say?
Yeah.
Okay, that's when the resident made
Right.
The final vote.
Yeah, I would say the residence vote is definitely the official date.
And that was oh six.
The governor saying you can vote on it.
Maybe we could incorporate it with the Founder's Day.
Yeah.
Veterans Day, Founder's Day. I know it's a little early, but I'm saying, I don't know, we could, I know it's not the day of.
Yeah, and
You know what I'm saying?
To think about, and that's why we
Or, or we just do a year long celebration, right? It starts then and it maybe runs till when the council's seated and we do something every month. Like we have a giveaway of trees or we do a, just something to commemorate it, um, because it is a big milestone.
Uh, Anita, did you find out what, uh, the celebration for Big Dog was?
I had, did not have time to ask about that, but that is something to bring up. We have three minutes. So apparently Big Dog had a big celebration the other day about the bunks.
Eighty?
Yeah, I saw the post.
Yeah. So we need to look into that because
It's not residential.
It's the dog.
Yeah, they, they're calling it, the, the puppy pods were, were rumored to have been part of a halfway house conspiracy.
Okay.
And they were, they were puppy pods. They were little sheds, like prefab sheds. Right? And they're literally, they were like maternity wards for dogs, for the puppies, right? This, from what I gathered, and I could be wrong, you know, I saw the post as well. I mean, from what I got, when they said eighty bunks, I think it's eighty dogs. They do have a, a veteran program there and they have a, a like, duplex types of scenario where they could for short stay, they're training with the dogs or overnight for watching dogs or whatever. But I believe that, that large building, the eighty bunks is dogs.
I think they call it a lodge is what they called it.
Yeah, it's, they were using the word bunks because it's ideas, it's, there are service animals for veterans and that's, that's the idea.
Building that faces Okeechobee?
To the east, farthest.
Furthest east.
Nearest the station.
No, I know, but
Yeah, yeah, so far as east, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. For a long time.
Yeah.
Whereas it sounded like the news coverage was placing it facing deeper. You know, and, and I said, no, the, the only thing that I knew that they were discussing was the east side of that property on the, the south side, southeast side.
You got a minute, guys? Anything you want to say?
Anything?
Yeah, yeah.
Casey, you were quiet tonight. You got nothing to say? You look tired, actually. Did you just travel in or something? You look really tired. Oh, you do. All right. Well, once again, I think this was like super productive. I appreciate the public, um, input. I appreciate the opportunity for us to toss things back and forth. Um, I, I even appreciate the liveliness of the conversation at times. Just the same, it's sitting at the kitchen table, but I think that we are getting a lot, um, accomplished through this. So, um, again, I will make a promise to work on this list tomorrow. If I don't get it done tomorrow, we'll get it done at least by the next day to Val and let her know that it's important to get it disseminated to you guys as quickly as possible. And then just pick your way that you want to prioritize or maybe. um, cut stuff out, whatever, and we'll talk about it. We'll make sure it's on the next agenda. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
They're moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.